This conference will now be recorded.
We will call to order this July 13, 2022, meeting of the Monterey Select Board at 6:00 PM. And our first item on the agenda, well, actually first, just in the form of President Town Hall.
Susan Cooper, President Town Hall.
And our first item on the agenda is meet with Lucy Prashker and Jake Edberwine of the Eight Town Regional School District Planning Board. So thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having us. So would you like me to speak from here or at the table?
You're welcome to sit closer.
That would be great.
There, if you'd like to.
Yeah. So I think the last time we met with the Monterey Select Board was a little over a year ago. And we're happy to be here this time. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you the update on our work and our plan going forward and to answer any questions that you or members in the audience might have. We're going to spare you a PowerPoint tonight. We did bring some of these summary materials.
Line up the shelves.
Yeah. These materials are on our website, eighttowns.org. But sometimes it's nice to have some old fashioned papers in front of you. So that's what we brought. You have that option. Just in terms of what's in this packet, Tab A is the executive summary, three and a half pages long.
You can come on in and come around. There's plenty more chairs. You just have to walk around. That's very capable.
Tabs B, C, D, and E are our bag of briefs that the planning board has put together on particular topics. And then Tab F are some of the frequently asked questions that we've received through our community outreach and responses to them. These are just an excerpt of what is on the website. We actually have seven questions on the website and responses to it. But these are the ones that are most frequently asked, so we excerpted those for you. Some of you in the room tonight are familiar with our work. But for those who are not, or who may be attending remotely, I wanted to start with just a bit of history. The Eight Town Regional School District Planning Board was formed in March of 2020. So we've been at this for a little over two years. The composition is determined by statute. Three members from each of the eight towns, with one of those members being a school committee representative from each of the towns. So we've got eight school committee reps on our board and the rest are community members. All of the members of our planning board are appointed by the moderator of each town. And on, from your town, we have Laura Rodriguez, who's your school committee member. There she is. Hi, Laura. We've got Don Coburn, and we have John Silver. So those are your three representatives. And all have been tremendously valuable contributors to the planning board's work. And we really thank them for all that they have contributed. The statutory mandate of the planning board is to determine the educational and financial advisability of regionalization. And in this case, we're talking about further regionalization because we already have two school districts, two regional school districts. So we're looking at the further regionalization by combining the two districts into one. We are essentially a study group. We have no legislative authority. If we determine that regionalization is advisable, our charge is to report that recommendation to the select boards of the eight-member towns. And a proposed regional school agreement, that's part of our statutory mandate, which would then be put to the voters of the eight towns for a vote. So it's the residents of the towns who have the ultimate power to decide yea or nay on any recommendation. During our first phase of work, we engaged the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, known as MARS, to examine our baseline situation in both districts. Where we are now and where we likely will be in five years if we don't change our current model of operation, the so-called do-nothing scenario. And MARS reported out its findings in October of 2020. That report confirmed for us the following, that we have had a dramatic decline in enrollment in both districts and that the decline is projected to continue. So from the period 2000 to 2030, the projection is that we're going to have a 52% decline across the two districts in student enrollment in that 30-year period. We're already down as of 2022, I think 32%, 35%, Jake, somewhere in that range. The decline at the Southern Berkshire Regional School District has been higher than that at Berkshire Hills, but there have been significant declines in both districts in enrollment. So we've got declining enrollment, but even though enrollment is declining, operational costs are going up in both districts. The lion's share of those operational costs, as you probably know, are personnel costs, salaries and benefits. And those operational costs rise every year and they are projected to continue to rise. So declining enrollment, increasing operational costs, and state funding that has been flat and is projected to remain flat. So although we have all of those pressures, we still have needs of students that are actually increasing. So we've got decreasing capacity in terms of funding, increasing needs of our students in many areas, and particularly in the areas of social-emotional development, special ed, English language learners. And we've had increasing need and demand for career vocational technical education. It's often referred to as CBTE. That's the acronym. So declining enrollment, increasing costs, flat state funding, increasing needs of students. All of this is putting tremendous pressure on the districts and our towns to be able to even maintain our current offerings, much less invest in educational enhancements that are necessary to achieve the broad and sustained success for our students in the two districts. Our board's analysis of the MARS findings was that our current model of operation, this was a conclusion of the finance subcommittee in December of 2020, that our current model of operation is not sustainable. That was a conclusion that our finance subcommittee reached in December of 2020. Meaning that as enrollment continues to decline and operational costs continue to rise, either educational programs will need to be dropped and there will be staff cuts that are associated with that, or town assessments are going to rise at an even steeper rate of increase as we've seen historically. So that conclusion led us to embark on our second phase of work, which was looking at what alternative models might serve our kids and our communities better. And in June 2021, we engaged our current research team, which is led by our project manager, Jake Edberwine, who's with me this evening. Frank Cody is also on our research team. For those who don't know Jake, he is a 30-year veteran educator. He was a classroom teacher. He was a college dean. He was the superintendent of the Pittsfield Public Schools. And he was the superintendent of the Lee Public Schools. And he is a leading expert on efforts at collaboration and regionalization across the county. On his team are three other former superintendents, including Frank, as well as experts in career vocational and technical education, CBTE, public school finance, and communication. The team spent nine months studying our two districts. Those studies included 15 separate research reports in a number of areas, including enrollment, indicators of educational quality, what makes for a good education, and how do those indicators compare across our two districts. Historical efforts at regionalization and collaboration, many in the room may know or remember that these two districts have been looking at the possibility of merging for decades. This is not a new idea. It's an idea that has been considered over and over again. And there was a prior recommendation by an independent consultant that the two districts merge. They've also looked at the current state of our facilities in the two districts. And there was a report done, a preliminary report done on student transportation. The team looked at seven possible alternative models that ranged over a wide spectrum, from full merger, pre-K through 12 on one end of that spectrum, to just increased collaboration on the other end of the spectrum, and lots of models in between. On March 22 of this year, the team presented those models together with its recommendation on what the team believed was the model that held out the most promise. And all of these materials are on our website, eighttowns.org. The preferred model, the model that was recommended by the team, was to merge the two districts into a single pre-K through 12 district, maintaining all existing elementary and middle schools as they are, but creating a new merged 9 through 12 high school to be built on the Great Barrington campus. In support of their recommendation, the team identified both educational advantages and fiscal efficiencies that it believed would be achievable by combining the two districts. And if you look at the executive summary, that's Tab A in your packet, those educational advantages and fiscal efficiencies are listed in bullet points on the bottom of page three going on to page four. I like to put them into three buckets. That's the way I think about them. For the students, the proposed merger, according to our research team, would offer them more. More courses, more programs, more electives, more enrichment experiences. It would offer expanded programming for high school students in a new state-of-the-art facility, including up to eight Chapter 74 CBTE programs, also maintaining all career pathways and early college opportunities that are currently being offered in the two districts. It would offer greater variety and support for sports and other extracurricular activities. It would allow for the pooling of resources to address the growing need to support students' social-emotional needs, special education needs, and the needs of English language learners. And it would offer a larger, more diverse student body with more opportunities to forge new social connections. For teachers, the proposed merger would allow for more professional development, deeper peer, meaning teacher-to-teacher networking, and support opportunities for our teachers. And for town taxpayers, the proposed merger would allow for the realization of fiscal efficiencies through the alignment of administrative and operational functions. The projected savings are in the range of $1.5 to $2.1 million annually. That could be reinvested in educational enhancements. It could be used to offset increases in town assessments that the towns would otherwise have, or they could be used in some combination of those two things.
Can you remind me what the projected budget would be, the operational budget? So we'd have that savings. What's the projected budget that that savings is based on?
I'm just looking it up real quick. I don't.
Ballpark to the nearest 10?
Yeah, well, I was looking at a budget this morning with no Chapter 70, and they wrote a 40 million. But I think it's, that was with how the Chapter 70 and State 8 coming in. I could get the number in literally 30 seconds.
No, I was just trying to ascertain what that would be on. Because it's a big difference to save a million off of 5 million versus to save a million off of 100 million.
Yeah, sure.
Great. Good point. So after the research team presented their findings and recommendation, the members of our eight-town board then held three two-hour meetings, which were facilitated by an outside facilitator, to discuss each of the seven possible models. And included in that discussion were representatives from the collective bargaining units in both districts. Teachers, we had teachers, we had paraprofessionals, and we had a maintenance person on those facilitated discussion calls. On April 26, following those deliberations, those six hours or so of deliberations, the board voted, by a vote of 16 to 6, to select as its preferred model the model that the research team had recommended, which again is a single district, single administration, maintaining existing elementary and middle schools where they are, and merging the high schools on the Great Barrington campus in a new building that would include both traditional academic courses and state-of-the-art CBTE space and programming. And the new building would be structured in a way that would not segregate the two populations of students, but would rather allow students to move back and forth between the two programs so that you're not pigeonholing any student into CBTE or even into academic courses, that there would be real fluidity across those two populations and two programs.
Question. When you took the vote, was there, I guess, you know, if it's a Supreme Court, it would be minority opinion. Were there the six who voted against? Was there any commonality in their reason for voting against? And if so, what was it?
It's a really good question, and I think each of the six had their own reasons for taking the vote. Some expressed a desire to spend more time talking about the models, that they thought there needed to be more time for deliberation. There were concerns voiced, and there are concerns that we've heard voiced in the community about the change that would, this would represent to primarily high school students and a need to explore those issues in more detail. So I think there are a variety of reasons, and I don't want to speak for my planning board members because we did actually, at Laura's suggestion, after the vote, put on the agenda for one of our later board meetings, a time for those who voted both in favor and against to speak more fully about their reasons for taking the vote that they did. That discussion got a little bit sidetracked, so we never really got fully into that discussion. But I, my sense at least, is that different members of the group who voted no when there were six had different reasons for the vote that they took. But when we took the vote, and this is really important, the board recognized that there was much work that lay ahead. It wasn't our final vote, right? It wasn't the vote that then comes to the select boards and goes to the residents for an up or down vote. We recognized that there was a lot more work to do, including more research of the selected, the preferred model, right? Particularly in the area of student transportation. And we've engaged an outside firm to do a very in-depth study of student transportation possibilities with a merged district. So that work is ongoing. We don't have that report yet. I hope we'll have that by the end of the month. Additional testing of the assumptions used in the financial modeling that demonstrated the savings. So probing that more, right, and testing the assumptions. And additional community outreach, very important part of our next phase. So that's what we've been doing in the two months since the vote, and that work is ongoing. A lot of work ahead. We also have begun to lay the groundwork to begin the process of drafting a new Eight-Town Regional School District Agreement that will be put to the voters perhaps as early as next spring. And it's going to be during that process that we will begin to grapple with the really difficult questions of putting together a new regional agreement for eight towns. That's a big undertaking. And there are two questions that we know are going to require a lot of discussion, study, and negotiation. One is committee composition. How's the committee going to be formed? How are the votes? Are they going to be weighted? Is everyone going to have the same vote? How is that all going to work? And assessment methodology. Because currently, the two districts have different assessment methodologies.
Sorry.
Yeah.
If you're still researching the preferred model, and you said there's a lot of work ahead on that, would it really be reasonable to expect that this could come to a vote at town meeting 2023 in towns? And how would you, with an actual agreement?
Yeah, we think so. We recognize that it is an aggressive timetable, but not an unreasonable one. And there's a reason why we need to make a decision now, right? By now, I mean by May of 2023.
What's that reason?
Yeah, so that's 10 months away. And the reason is that if the residents in the eight towns think this is a good idea, right? If they think it's a good idea, then the new high school that's going to get built on that Great Barrington campus, whether or not we merge, needs to be right-sized for the larger high school, right? So if we're going to merge, and if we're going to share a high school in Great Barrington, we want that high school to be built to accommodate us. We want it to be a high school that can accommodate 725 kids, not 550 kids. And so, as you may know, Berkshire Hills has been accepted into this MSBA pipeline for eligibility. They are in the pipeline. They have a timeline. And Jake can speak to this a lot better than I. But they have a timeline that they have to follow in order to move their project forward. So the way I think about it is, if we want to get to this destination, big F, right? We don't know that yet. But if the residents of the eight towns want to merge and want to build a new high school together, then we need to get on the train before it leaves the station. We need to get in on the ground floor and start the planning and have a voice at the table in the planning and design and educational visioning of that new high school. And in order to do that and fit into the timeline of the MSBA, we need to take this vote in the spring of 2023. Or that would be the way that is most likely that we won't miss the train and we won't be foreclosed from this opportunity. Because remember, that new high school, if it is supported by the MSBA, is going to be supported financially by the state kicking in anywhere from 48 to 54% of the cost. So we want to, if we want to do this and we want to build a new high school together, we want to get that state funding. So we have to follow the MSBA timeline. Jake, can you expand on that a little bit?
No, I mean, you did a great job. You stole all my thunder, right? No, I think, you know, there is a timeline, and we actually were just discussing this this morning with the MARS people, Massachusetts Regional Schools, really talking about this really neat timing between the regional agreements and the MSBA, and, you know, where have they seen this play out in other communities? And it's work, but it's tricky timing because you've got a little bit of a chicken/egg thing going on in which you're trying to get to a regional agreement while you're also trying to develop a high school. And a high school is being designed almost with two possible scenarios, a three-town scenario and an eight-town scenario.
And one other question on facilities, before we're on topic. It's my general understanding that the Mount Everett School Building is newer and well-maintained and that the Monument Mountain High School is in poor condition and why it's going to be replaced. But it would seem unfortunate to me should a decision be moved along quickly just because the Monument School Building is in poor condition. Does that make sense? And also, I guess the second part of that question is, what is the plan for the use of the newer and well-maintained Mount Everett High School Building, should this recommended model be the way that we proceed?
Yes, I guess the first question is rushing the process, right? Feeling rushed in the process, and I get that 100%. But I also, and I guess I can say this as a somewhat neutral party, I have no, you know, doubt that this high school is getting built. It's going to happen. Berkshire Hills has been at this since 2008. As you point out, Mount Everett is in great shape, and Berkshire Hills Monument is dilapidated. It's, we ran it a couple days ago, and it needs to be probably demoed and rebuilt. So, you know, they've gone through this crazy process in 2008, in which they got accepted to the MSBA. They brought us to three towns. It failed twice. Once you fail twice, you're out. And so then you got to get back to the good graces of the MSBA. And they've spent six years applying every single year to get back in good graces. And they just got accepted in March of 2022.
I need to ask this truly evil question, but given that it failed twice, why do you guys think it won't fail? Let's say it were just the three towns and this didn't happen. What makes anybody think that it won't fail again?
You know, there's no guarantee in voting in politics, right? I got you 100%. We're seeing that all over the world and from the nation. What I would say to you is that one of the things that they did after the two valid votes is they took a step back. I think it was very demoralizing community, and maybe some of you were more connected to it than I am. I'm reading literature and talking to people, right, so a little bit of the outside view. But they went back and they said, what was the deal breaker? And the deal breaker was the way they were assessing capital. And so they spent almost a year revising their regional agreement on capital assessment. And so they shifted the burden a bit around between the three towns. And all three towns agreed to it. They voted for it. So that is one test, right, voting for it. The second test is actually using it, right? So they just got a test on the using it.
Right.
Not a massive one, but enough of one. They asked for, I think it was a million and a half dollars to support this first phase of the study. And that needed to be approved by all three towns. That's a capital investment in the past. So clearly, the new methodology is resonating in some way. Can I guarantee anyone that a high school that comes in at $80 million is going to be passed by the voters? That's still yet to be determined. A lot of work that goes into designing the school, telling people what's in the school, marketing the idea, and hopefully sending it to the ballot box.
So we're talking about, that was another question, was the projected cost of the new building is $80 million?
No, no. Yeah, that's, you want to be clear. So we ran projections. We, there's a lot of assumptions in our financial models, and we are very clear. We spell those out. We're not shy about saying where we had to put in assumptions. And one of the assumptions was, we were asked to evaluate both the impact of consolidating the two districts, right? A merger. But we were also asked to assess the impact of a new high school construction project. And so we added that in as a second layer to the calculus. And what we did is I used figures that were the last reasonable figures generated out of the Monument process, which were a big range. It was 76 to about $96 million is what they were evaluating this project could be. Now, keep in mind that they were still debating partial reno, transformative reno, or full demo of a new building, which would create that range. So I marked our figure, probably more for easy math, but that it was still on the top end of the range at 100 million. That's where I put it.
Because I was going to say, what year was that estimate done? Their estimate. When was their estimate?
I think it was 2016. So, yeah. Anyway, everyone's going to say is like, we're in the middle of a massive inflationary period, right? You know, I go to Lumberjack like everyone else. I apply with like everyone else. I get it. So, you know, this is, there's a lot of work that would have to go into, A, the design of the building. Design of the building will be dictated by the number of students in the building. Design of the building will be dictated by the number of students in the building because MSBA has very straightforward formulas about how they create square feet. And then ultimately, that design translates into a cost. And that's ultimately what will be sort of partitioned out for assessments, capital assessments to the town. If, if we proceed with the recommended model, how will the Mount Everett High School Building be used? Okay, so that was a secondary question. Yeah, thanks for reminding me. So right now, in the preferred model, we would be moving grades nine through 12 to the new high school, which would have a new name and all that, right? Currently, Mount Everett is sixth through 12. So the sixth through eighth graders would remain at Mount Everett and be educated in that space. You have a lot of excess space, but Mount Everett would still, in effect, be in use.
It just seems like a very good and large facility to, I guess, waste that space.
Yeah.
You know, it's a good building. It's new, and it's been well-maintained. From what I, I graduated in 2016 from Mount Everett. And I would hope that there would be a better plan as to make good use of that space.
So, yeah, so that's, and Lucy talks about this, and she probably had it in her talking points, and
You can pick.
No, it's great. So the repurposing of a building is a really important part of any community's process to close and restructure, rebuild, and all that, right? And we know that, I live in Dalton, so we sat with an empty Nessicus Middle School for I don't know how long, 15 years, before we finally paid a million dollars to demo it, which was unfortunate. There were a lot of things that could have happened that the town just struggled to come to grips with. So because it would still be an educational facility in use, we could see additional educational function situated there, whether it's adult programming, whether it's literacy programs, whether it's special ed programs that could be specialized, combining student groups of two groups, where we might be sending kids out-to-out placements, might be the potential creative program, alternative education. So there are some things, workforce development, where you could repurpose the space for, you know, educationally related things. Other ideas, you know, move into the realm of economic development, you know, whether it's incubator space, entrepreneurial space, bringing in community services, towns of youthies that convert into community centers, rec centers, senior center. I mean, there's all kinds of examples of where the repurposing was done well. I wrote a little bit about that in the facilities report, and I cited a larger study in which, which was done on that particular topic, which might lend a little bit more information than I just gave you.
Yeah, I think it would be great if in further research on this model, we could come up with a plan on how to use that building that the taxpayers of Monterey and of the five towns have paid for and maintained over the years so that we know that it wouldn't go to waste.
Sure.
And like you said, there are instances of school buildings that are vacated and they aren't utilized.
And actually, Berkshire Hills has two, right? There's Searls and there's the one in Houston.
Right.
That are both still derelict after many years of disuse and going down the drains because of it, because they've been so long unoccupied and were never properly used. So, and Stockbridge had their town hall that is still not being used. So there's a long history of public buildings really not being properly repurposed. I want to ask another follow-up question on that. As I understand it, from reading through the 156-page report and a bunch of the other research reports and looking at some of the references online, so keep in mind, like, I have an open mind. I really honestly can say I don't know what the best choice is, but I'm playing devil's advocate here. But I take these questions seriously. As I understand it, major cost savings occur from regionalization for two reasons. One, you close buildings. Two, you drop staff.
That's right.
As I read this, we are not closing buildings and not losing staff. And I don't, and I don't consider a million dollars off a $50 million budget to be a significant savings, frankly.
Sure.
Right? So I don't see Show me the beef. I don't see the economic beef here at all, especially when you take into account what's involved in the additional capital cost, which is going to eat up, hugely eat up. Any $1 million operational savings is going to be completely offset by the additional capital costs that we'll all be carrying.
Sure.
I mean, Stockbridge's case, after looking at those figures, I couldn't believe you could get buy-in from them at all through their assessment going up 800%. Like, if I, if I went to my town meeting and told them their assessment is going to be increased 800%, I, I don't, I just, I get chuffed, just even that.
Yeah. I get the idea, we'll never get this through if anyone's assessment goes up 800%.
So what's the response to those issues?
Right, so the question was, you're spot on. The way you save money is you close buildings and you cut staff, right? You reduce staff, right? And the research says that. And then you nibble away at other things, right? Where you create more efficient transportation systems, or purchasing, joint purchasing, or you figure out a way to bring your special ed kids back in the district and don't spend 250 grand. I mean, there's other ways where you can generate savings. The way that the one and a half million to 2.1 was generated in this particular model is just two places. One is central office efficiencies, operational efficiency. Need one superintendent, not two.
Right.
Right? That's just a simple example. But there are other central office functions that have the same sort of redundancies. I see them all across Berkshire County.
Right.
You know, we have
Admin is a big overhead.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't, I wouldn't argue that, you know, most districts are top-heavy. I hear that a lot, and I don't think that that's the case. But you got people doing grant reporting, HR work, payroll in 15, 16 different districts of Berkshire County. So you're paying for them to do all that. And there's room for consolidation, for sure. We've seen pieces of that in shared business managers. And Lee, when I was superintendent, we shared food services director. It, you know, it worked on some levels. And the reason it didn't work is because we weren't a single district, and so we had two software systems. So the poor person had to work in two software systems, two different collective bargaining agreements, pain in the rear end, right? So, so the reductions were in central office A and B at the high school. So what we did was, we, I did classroom balancing. So you look at, I looked at every single class in both high schools this past year, looked at the number of kids in classes, whether there were Algebra I here, Algebra I there, how many sections, if you start looking at billing the classes, you start to reduce sections of classes because you don't need as many. And then you start reducing FTEs. And that's how we got to the savings. And I can, I can, you know, we've gone through the finances in great detail with the finance subcommittee, and we didn't put that level of detail on the report, but I'm happy to review it.
But my point is, wouldn't that rather modest savings be significantly offset by the capital costs? And you could say, well, that would only be a 30-year bond. But frankly, that's a long time to be paying that.
Well, I guess the question is, it depends. And the dependence is how you assess your capital.
Well, yeah, also, for Mount Everett, we don't foresee that kind of expenditure in our future, but it sounds like Monument Mountain is probably going to be rebuilt either way.
Right, but if you're part of that district, we'd be paying for the cost of the building.
Yeah.
So the offset in operational costs for us would be significant. We would actually end up paying more, not less.
But my point being, for the other three towns, if they're going to be
They're going to have to pay, right?
Going to the school anyway, there's not that.
Yeah, I mean, I have a one basic rule in our assessment analysis. We're running a lot of numbers right now, and we continue to, is that if we see a lot of red, we're in trouble. There's, this does not happen. And the objective is get to as much green as possible. And that means balancing costs across districts, applying the efficiencies. In some cases, there's a reshuffling based on the methodology, whether it's property value, whether it's foundation enrollment, whether it's five-year averages like you all do, right? There's different ways to slice and dice it. And we're trying to look at those all. And that will actually be really heavily discussed, I think, at the regional agreement committee because we have to come up with a solution that everyone can accept. So now let's get into capital costs, right? Because that's, that's a hot button item. And I can tell you right now, if we took the $100 million high school and we spread it based on a formula, whether it's foundation enrollment, or property value, or minimum contribution, the five towns would get crushed. Okay? And so that would never go. We know that Monument's going to build a high school. And so that high school is going to cost some amount of money. And then we know that to add Mount Everett's students in is going to add some proportional cost to it. Maybe not proportional to the student body, but there's going to be additional stuff that needs to be built, right? So the way that we built the model out of 100 million is we assigned $90 million to the three towns and $10 million to the five. So a 90-10 split in effect. All right? So pretty easy math so far. And then we did something else. We still thought it would probably end up with a little bit too much of capital liability in the five towns. So MSBA provides an incentive for creating a region, and that incentive is 6%. So we actually took the 6% savings on 100 million, $6 million. We applied it to get to 10. And so we reduced the liability, capital liability at five towns, down to around $4 million. And then we assessed that out over 25 years at three and a quarter. And that was our model. So we can give you the figures on what that actually translates to. Now, we have no idea whether this is, this is palatable, all eight towns, but this is how, we're trying to get to a place that the towns can agree. Now, the 90 million, in my opinion, is still going to be absorbed by Berkshire Hills, whether they build it, if they build it alone, they're going to probably build a $90 million facility. And they're going to own all that liability, right? At about 48% is what their reimbursement rate is sketched out at. They get it, we get this additional 6 for this great potential consolidation. So, so do you have a figure of anything?
I do.
Thank you.
I do. So assuming this 90-10 split and applying the full 6% to decrease the liability of the five towns, 25-year bond, the debt service to Monterey, the annual debt service to Monterey would be $49,460. So it's a pretty modest contribution relative to what you would be getting, which would be a new high school, state-of-the-art CBTE, which we don't have any of in Southern Berkshire, and the educational advantages, right? So for me, what's driving this, for me personally, is I think on the educational side, the students will have so much more if we do this. So if we can afford it, it seems to me that we should do it. There are others who are looking primarily at the fiscal efficiencies. If you look at page 124 of that report, all of which you referenced, I'm very impressed. Even after applying the cost of the new debt service, assuming this 90-10 proposal flies in Berkshire Hills, which is an assumption, right? But assuming it does, Monterey is still net savings after you apply the, the cost of the new capital contribution. Now, again, this assumes that all of the savings that we're going to realize from this merger sort of gets returned to the towns as opposed to some portion of that being invested in educational enhancements. And that will be up to the new school committee, when and if it's formed, right? But I just wanted to make sure you were clear that even with the capital liability, your net savings in Monterey, that's not true in Stockbridge.
I know.
Right? It's not true in Stockbridge. It's not true in West Stockbridge. But it's true in Monterey.
Yeah, okay. Speaking of fiscal efficiencies, will, and it's my understanding that teachers will not be terminated and will focus on or allow attrition to have that reduction in teaching staff. Will you be, within this recommended model, would administrative staff be terminated? Or how else would you achieve the savings of only having one administration rather than two? Will you, will you be terminating the administrative staff from one district or the other, or both?
Yeah, I mean, there's always this secondary concern. And I've heard this in other communities where, you know, if we lose, if people lose jobs, that's also, that generates economic sort of value to our community, right? They live in our community, they spend money in our community, that sort of thing. We, I think that this process will roll out in a slow enough way so that attrition will happen, some job sort of reorganization may happen. There are open positions in Berkshire Hills still right now, which gives you, we just wrote a report on sort of the educational staffing crisis in Berkshire County. And it's challenging. Now, I'm not going to speak to what, how you would go about if both superintendents wanted to stay. I mean, I really believe that we're talking, you know, three to five years out. And that during that time, you know, you don't have a sense of what the positions are. And some of that stuff, I just believe will play out naturally. Where there are places where, hey, we have, you know, an extra third-grade teacher, and they all want to work for what?
High school.
Well, yeah, high school, okay. An extra Algebra I teacher, okay? That's a better, better example, thank you. Because we're not doing it with elementary school teachers. Thank you for reminding me of that. You might, you know, some of the schools are going into adding positions or repurposing people, reorganizing people into interventionists, or medial teachers, or, you know, instructional coaches, things of those sorts. So, yeah, I think the idea is to sort of allow those things to sort of play out naturally. What I've heard from the superintendents is their sense is that it would.
And I guess there's only superintendent is just one position. But there's a lot of other administrative positions, enough that you're saying eliminating them would, would be a significant part of the cost savings.
Yeah.
So that, I don't know how many exactly full-time or part-time employees that is, but what happens when it doesn't play out naturally? What's the plan? I mean, if you're not going to save money if you don't cut positions, and if two people want to stay,
Right.
how is that decision?
Well, if push comes to shove, and we're at that 25 years down the road, someone's position is getting cut. I mean, well, I'd be lying to you if I didn't say otherwise.
Yeah. But not, but not as much, so for teachers or administrative staff?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're at that point, and attrition hasn't solved the problem. Two special ed directors, two curriculum directors, right? That, that's the reality, for sure. And having been a real superintendent and gone through tough budget situations, that's not a unique thing, right? Where you're having to look very carefully at how you're going to pay your bills next year. So in some cases, it's tricky. We were talking about this morning, I'm going to get a little off-topic here, but you know, a lot of people ask this question, why are budgets going up as students are going down? Like, what's the deal here? Like, wouldn't you see proportionally staff going down? And the problem is, is the decline is just slow enough and spread out across 12 grades that you never are at a point where it's like, okay, you lost 30 kids, and that's one class of kids down a teacher. It's spread across and sort of not extreme enough to really get to the point where you're cutting staff in any one year, which is why it's tricky, you know, it's tricky work. We're going to try to project to 2030 so that we can, you know, it's very speculative at that point. We're sort of looking into the future and saying, this is what we think the enrollment is going to be. This is how the budget could have grown by then. And how many staff we actually need based on the number of kids you have, and how does that translate? And then there's, you know, this, this sort of transitional process that occurs between those two points. So anyways, I'm sorry, I'm rambling a little bit, but I think it's somewhat related to your question.
One second, sorry. I have two procedural questions. We talked a lot about how the school district planning board will ultimately have a school district, a school, or perhaps probably a subcommittee that would make an agreement to be presented to town meetings.
Yeah, so what we have in mind is actually not a subcommittee of the planning board, but an advisory group that's going to be smaller than our planning board. We have 23 on the planning board. It's hard to get real dialogue going with 23 people on Zoom. But we're, we're looking to put together an advisory group that's made up of folks outside of the planning board, hopefully one person from each town. So one of my asks tonight was for this select board to start thinking about who from Monterey might be a person who has the time and capacity and expertise to serve on that advisory board as we start to hammer out these very difficult issues of committee composition, assessment methodology, et cetera. So that advisory board, we hope, is going to start meeting at the end of So that advisory board, we hope, is going to start meeting at the end of this month. Once we get it constituted, hoping one person from each of the eight towns. We have our planning board council, TAT, to help us with that work. We've had Mars present us with some preliminary materials drawing from regional school districts across the Commonwealth with different possibilities for each of these things. And so we're going to start working on going through those issues, hammering out the easy things and brainstorming the difficult ones over the next month, two months, three months. Then the advisory board will present to the planning board their recommended draft. And that will then be debated and considered and deliberated by the full planning board before any vote is taken to recommend that out to the select boards and the town voters.
Okay. Uh, I just want to throw out, right, I'm sure you guys are fully cognizant, not only of the assessment issues based on what I read in the report, but also the representation issues. But, um, given that Monterey, and I, I came in late to the party of our current district agreement. There have been a lot of issues about the fact that we have one rep out of nine and it's heavily weighted towards Sheffield, and yet we pay a lot more for students. For a lot of reasons, which I understand. But if it then went to a similar system, we basically have no vote, right? Our one, if we kept only one rep on that school committee and everybody else had them assess the way our current situation does, our vote wouldn't count for the doubt. Right? So, um, you know, from my perspective, from where I sit, I would prefer to see a more, I'll call it the senatorial model, where towns have equal, an equal stake in those decisions rather than a weighted stake. And I, I understand why other towns might feel differently. But there's a reason the Senate system works the way it does. And that's that, that means small states have the same stake as big states in a lot of important issues. And, um, I, I think if we're, you know, based on how our assessment has worked and what our land valuations are, um, I just, I, I don't think it's fair to have no voice once you're in the compact. So I'm just putting out that I hope that that's a consideration. I know there's others that would oppose it because they want more voice, but.
Right, well, there are lots of different possibilities on committee composition. I remember when the members of the five, uh, the five members of the Southern Berkshire Regional, the Southern Berkshire District were in litigation with each other. I was actually a named party. So I was on the school committee at the time. So there was litigation over one person, one vote, and what's a fair representation model. And that litigation ultimately settled with an appointed model, which everyone hated. And we then morphed into our current system, which is district-wide voting with residency requirements. But there are lots of different possibilities. And these are definitely tough questions. And these are the questions we're going to grapple with first in this advisory group. Then it will come back to the planning board. And of course, ultimately, it will be decided by town residents.
So, and, and the way, the my understanding of the recommendation that's been accepted, and as it's put in your frequently asked questions. The meeting voted to approve as the preferred model. And then it says this model is now the subject of further study and analysis.
Correct.
And so with this hyperspeed timeline of a school district, school district agreement advisory committee meeting at the end of this one. Is there any, and, and potentially having this on, on town meeting warrants in May of 2023? Is there any real possibility for further research on this model and changing course? If further research shows that this isn't, uh, you know, maybe the, the data is different or, or we find something else? I mean, how could, how can there be further research on something where an SDA is going to be drafted beginning at the end of this month? And we're, we're talking town meeting warrants in May? It seems like, is it further research or have we said this is the way we're going or we're going nowhere at all?
It's all happening simultaneously. So, so the fact that we're putting an advisory group together to start brainstorming and discussing what might be in an eight-town, eight-month school district agreement doesn't mean we're not also continuing with our additional research of the transportation issues, which is ongoing right now. And we will get a report maybe the end of the month and the planning board will look at that. Our finance subcommittee is meeting regularly and asking questions and testing the assumptions behind the model. So it's all happening simultaneously. It's not that we're just going to focus on the regional agreement and not do any of the other work we talked about doing to test the assumptions, to look at transportation deeper and all of the rest.
But I mean, in your own analysis, is there any real possibility that after further research, you could, the, the group and the advisory committee could change course and go with a different model? Or is the timeline just so short that by the time you realize the transportation, you know, numbers were different? Or these numbers were different, or this, here's something, you know, here's further research. Is it at that point too late to go with a different model and draft the, uh, the related SDA and, and building by next minute? I mean, it, it seems to me like if, if it's this quick of a timeline, I'm not saying you're not doing further research. But to what extent is there any real possibility that you do further research and change course?
If the further research demonstrates to a majority of our planning board that the preferred model isn't going to work, we're not going to recommend it to you ever, right? So, so we're not committing now that there is going to be a recommended regional district agreement on your plate, right, end of December, beginning of January, for you to look at and then put on the warrant for May. That's our sketched-out timeline, assuming the further research and work verifies and corroborates the initial selection of a preferred model. If it doesn't, we're not going to recommend it. If in the, in the opinion of a majority of the planning board, there's a big problem, a deal stopper, we're not going to come forward with a recommendation to go forward anyway.
And so, so to what extent is this further research being done by the same people who came up with these assumptions? And to what extent are there any different consultants who might question some of the assumptions? You know, as this further research is being done? You know, I think people generally like to corroborate their own assumptions. Uh, I could be wrong, but are there any other secondary opinions being brought in to, to?
Well, I guess, maybe I'll let Jake respond to the, to that in detail. But I think it's important for you to understand that the preferred model was not recommended by a single consultant or a single researcher. We had a big research team, right? And so we've got four, four former superintendents. We've got, uh, school finance experts. We've got a communication expert. And so it, it has already, in a sense, been peer reviewed by that team. It has also been carefully analyzed and studied by the 23 members of our planning board. And questions have been raised about the financial models, projections have been, there've been questions about projecting those numbers forward. And there's been a lot of work that's already been done to further study and test the assumptions behind the models. And the work is out there for the community to look at and poke out. And we get questions in and we respond. So, um, I think there has been a lot of, my point is there've been a lot of eyes on this already. I know from the perspective of some folks, this feels rushed. From my perspective, having worked on this for over two years and attended over 110 meetings and read hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of reports and analyzed them and studied them and asked the research team questions about them. It doesn't feel rushed to me. I understand the perspective, but let me just talk a little bit about how much money we have spent looking at this issue. We've gotten tremendous support from the state. We've already spent over $300,000 analyzing these issues. And I say that not to freak anyone out, but to give you a sense of, number one, the complexity of the work and how comprehensive this study has been. There has never been a time before where this volume of resources and attention and time has been spent looking at the possibility of this merger. It's been a huge effort with lots of resources focused on it.
A couple of procedural questions. So after this is recommended to select boards in the eight towns, it would rely on the select boards to put, uh, an SDA or whatever else may go on a town meeting warrant, put it on the town meeting warrant?
The select boards are required by statute to put it on the warrant.
Okay, so it's not really up to the select boards?
No. It's required to present the recommendation to the select boards. And the select boards are then required by the statute to put it to the town voters.
Because of Mass General law, statute?
Correct.
Okay. And then on your frequently asked questions document. A new eight-town regional school district will be formed only if a majority of the voters in each town approve entering into a new regional school district agreement. So if seven towns approve the proposed agreement, what happens if six towns, five towns? What happens in that case?
Great, really good question. And it's a question we get asked a lot. So if the recommendation is for an eight-town district and there is proposed an eight-town regional school district agreement, each of the eight towns have to vote yes to be a party to that new agreement. Is it theoretically possible that one town says no and a seven-town new region could be formed? Yes, it's possible. It would require a new proposed regional school district agreement. And then those seven towns would have to vote yes by a majority. So it is theoretically possible. It's certainly not what we're hoping for or planning for or expecting. But it is possible with the following caveat. If either Sheffield or Great Barrington don't want to do this, it's not going to happen, right? Because there wouldn't be the student population to support, uh, the new high school in Great Barrington. But if my town, the town of Alford, were the, was the lone holdout here? I think it unlikely that the town of Alford could hold the other seven towns hostage if the other seven towns really wanted to do this. And so what, would there then be a possibility that there'd be a seven-town district? And Alford would need to either tuition in to the new district or tuition in to Lennox or do something else? It's possible. It's not what we're planning for, it's not what we're hoping for.
So everything I've read in the literature talks about the absolutely crucial role of, I'll call it, public and parent involvement in the success of, um, regional district. I have been concerned that the online meetings alone and their accessibility, although they, like, I definitely think they provide a certain accessibility. I'm in favor of at least mixed-platform meetings. But I'm not convinced that that is a sufficient outreach to communities. Both parents in school systems and taxpayers. And, um, just knowing my town, I feel like, um, there may, I think there are a lot of people out there that aren't really aware of the situation that we're in, of how long this has been ongoing. And I'm concerned that without more of a plan to do that public outreach before we get to April, even if we in this room thought this is a great idea, it could easily tank. So I'd like to hear what the plan is to do more significant public outreach. And, and I don't think that just saying things are on your website qualifies.
Yeah, and, and we've talked about this before and there's Laura. Laura's on our community outreach subcommittee. And this is an intense area of our focus right now. We agree with you that in-person meetings, I have to say, hats off to Monterey. Because we've now done, what, five of these?
Five.
And this town has the most public attendance at a select board meeting by far of any of the towns. So congratulations on that. But we agree, especially this kind of dialogue, which we haven't had the opportunity to have, is really helpful. And, um, it's helpful to us. I hope it's helpful to the group to hear this back and forth. And I think we need to do more of it. And we're very open to that and would welcome your suggestions. What we have done so far, in addition to the website, which I understand, um, you don't think gets the word out there, is, uh, we did do the survey, right, in October of 2021. We had three surveys. One survey went out to students, one survey went out to.
Faculty.
Faculty and staff, and then the third to community members. And we got what we thought was a really healthy response. We got over 1,200 responses, which when you look at how many folks turned up at town meeting, you know, it's not that bad, right? So we got 1,200 responses to the initial survey. Now that, that was almost a year ago, right? But, but we did do that outreach. We've had our board meetings and subcommittee meetings, over 110. They're open to the public. We take public comments at every one of those meetings except a handful, maybe three or four, we didn't. We recently held the two virtual community convenings. I think you were at one of those. I don't know if other folks in the room were. Some people loved that because you, it was interactive and you could type in your questions. You could type in your concerns, what you thought the strengths were, what you thought the challenges were. Those were successful. Jake's been to Rotary. We are doing this round of meetings with select boards and finance committees in each of the eight towns. This is the second time we've done this. We did it about a year ago, we're doing it now. We had a meeting last night at the Sheffield Senior Center. We had one Monterey resident there. It was great. There were about 20 people there, maybe a little more. And we had really good dialogue back and forth. We'd spent, what, like an hour and a half there or so? It was a really good night. But we're looking to do more of that because we completely agree with you. And I, we think that the smaller groups and in-person meetings are, are much more effective and allows us to, you know, sort of get to know each other a little bit better. Which I think is important to building trust and really hearing the information.
Yes, speaking of, uh, community input, are there any comments or questions from the members of the public here remotely?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Just introduce yourself.
I'm Frank Cody, I'm part of the research team. I've worked with Jake for 20-plus years. And my expertise is the CBT-E, I'm retired. And I want to go back to finance, just to let you know, I mean, I've got no horse in this race. I don't even get paid to do this, I do it because of this guy. So since last summer, I've looked down into the CBT-E. I'm pretty sure Berkshire Hills is going to build a school. Um, I, I mean, I would bet it in Vegas right now that they're going to build a school. And they're going to put in CBT-E programs in that school. So I just want you to be aware that if it's not an eight-town school, you know that there's going to be kids, I don't know how many kids you have right now in Southern Berkshire going to. But every student that looks at that new school and that CBT-E program is going to cost this town $20,000 to send those kids to that school to do vocational education. So just think of two kids, that's $40,000 a year. They're going to ninth grade, 10th, 11th, and 12th. So I'm just saying, for CBT-E, it's very important, you know, to understand that TECAD built a new school and, you know, as they say, build it and they will come? Well, they're coming. I mean, TECAD is going to turn into a straight vocational school, so many kids are coming. And the rest of the academic are going to go to Pittsfield High. So I'm telling you right now, there's 25% of the kids in North County that are in vocational. There's 20% of the kids in Central. And there's less than 3% of the kids in vocational in Southern Berkshire. And that's Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire region.
That's all, all of the Lennox too.
As I understand it, VOTEC's CVET
CVTE.
CVTE schools that are under 1,500 students don't really, like, it doesn't work out.
What do you mean?
Everything I've looked at, the districts that are successful with their CVTE programs are 1,500 and up.
No. McCann has only got 520 kids, and they're, they steal kids from jury and Cheshire constantly. And Pittsfield's going to have more than they're going to have now.
How many different tracks do they have?
They have 13 programs in Pittsfield. But as you look at your numbers here, if there's eight towns, they're going to go into this high school, you're looking at possibly, I don't know, 725, 730 if it's eight towns. And then Lennox and Lee, which is closer this way than that way, is going to be the tuition that's going to go into that school, you know? So I just want you to be aware of the finances of that part of it because really, and it's true, if you build it, then Deconic figured that out. They built it, and they're all coming, and they're filling that school up, so. And again, you're right. I was in a vocational regional school district, and that's, for me, that was great. It is straight. But I also, I was his assistant superintendent in Pittsfield as the assistant superintendent for career education. And we had a ton of kids. They just, you know, and they will flock to those good programs and they will do it, you know, because kids are looking. And then we saw that in our surveys. I mean, kids were like, oh, I want to do automotive, I want to do culinary, I want to do, you know? So we're trying to figure out what are the programs? And that's one of the things that we're going to be doing in the next couple of months, is figuring out what are the programs that Southern Berkshire down here needs, you know? I mean, I started teaching at the South Berkshire Educational Collaborative back in the 80s. And I don't know how many people know about that place, but when I taught culinary arts, the biggest complaint with the kids coming saying, Mr. Seag, we don't have enough time down here. I get on a bus, I go to school, I get on another bus, I come down to the collaborative. I have to get back on a bus. I got to go back to school. I got to get on a bus and go home. How come, can I stay here later? I said, well, yeah, I can give you a ride, but I can't give everybody a ride. I mean, so that's why the, you know, the collaborative thing doesn't work with a small group. And if you have programs, I'm telling you, and they're going to have programs. They're going to, kids are going to go to that. I'm telling you right now. You're going to probably look at 150 to 200 to start in your, in your CVTE programs to start. And some are going to come out of this, some are going to come out of Alford, some are going to come out of, you know, they're going to go in those programs. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's a draw. CVTE is a draw because kids told us in a certain, they didn't have an opportunity to do it because it's not available. Now they're going to have an opportunity. So I just want you to be aware of that. That's all.
Just introduce yourself.
I'm Kim Jeffries. Actually, Kim, I'll get you to explain this. Did they actually do a survey of Southern Berkshire Regional School District to see how many kids would actually go to VOTEC versus going to college? Just a question, knowing our numbers. And is it really that cost efficient not to pay per student, knowing our numbers, to choice out versus all the other costs that go in to us as a town? Secondly, this is just the first shot. Okay, we have a certain percentage of the bill. But then there's school budgets, there's transportation, and all that goes up. Extreme amounts, because now we're in this conglomerate. We have an empty school. You're talking about possibly redoing something with it, including, you know, possibilities like adult ed, things like that, putting grownups on the same campus as children, you know? So I mean, that's just some of my questions, and I have a whole bunch more. But I don't see the cost savings. And I'm not talking about assessment of my property. I'm not talking about my taxes go. I don't see the savings because I know how a school district budget works. And I know how a small town and what we pay and what Berkshire Hills, and I'm very familiar with Berkshire Hills because my eldest went there. So, and to that high school. I also want to know what tech programs, because we do have culinary, we do have tech programs at Southern Berkshire. I know in the past Monument had a building program, and they did away with it because my husband went through that building program way, way back. So there's no guarantee any of these programs are going to stay because they've never stayed in the past. The only thing that stayed has been automotive and greenhouse at that school and a small woodworking shop. And I know the woodworking teachers that have shot out there. So I don't see, because we are now, you know, I don't see the value. I see one or two kids getting value, but on us as a whole, I don't see the value of the town.
What if you had six kids go?
Do we have?
I don't know how many kids you have, but if you look at the other programs
Six kids out of five towns.
No, no.
I'm talking, do you know how many is in each graduating class in Southern Berkshire?
It's a small number.
Yeah. So Monterey, six kids going there? Could be, possibly. Likely, I don't know.
You know, depending on the program.
But the other thing is, is even if they do go to this tech school and get a career and stuff like that, I mean, it's not going to, they're not going to be here. Yeah, I mean, it's like, so we're incorporating our cost, and none of our kids stay. And it's not whether we have a tech school or they go to college or whatever. Very rarely kids stay.
I can pass this on to Jake to talk about graduation rates in college.
Yeah.
And Southern Berkshire.
Yeah, I got a lot of good questions.
Great questions.
Well, and I guess another question would be, you're familiar with the early college program that's taking foothold in Southern Berkshire? And how would that, how would that factor in that collaboration with Simons Rock to send students to college early? Would that be in part of the new school district in Great Barrington in this recommended model? Would it just not happen anymore?
The answer is it would not happen. My husband actually teaches at Simons Rock, and as far as I understand it, the head of school is not interested in offering that program outside of Southern Berkshire.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I can't speak to the head of school. I can tell you that the Department of Ad권s early college grants and encourages districts to participate in early college. There's, I think, three districts right now in the county that have early college grants. They also have dual enrollment grants. Things are slightly different. It's getting earning college credits in a couple of different ways. I have no question that a combined district would be in great position to set up early college as a pathway. I think the idea here is to carry forward from each district, sort of the best of the best, right? It's like to make sure that all the opportunities that exist in one of the high schools are available to all kids in the eight towns, not just in kids, for kids in the five or the three. So, you know, you have a cybersecurity program, they don't. So that would be something that would carry over. And, you know, you might have small cybersecurity classes now. Now you add another five kids in, 500 kids in, you make that set of courses available to all the kids. So that, to me, is my, my take on all this. You know, I sat on the State Committee that actually wrote the line for early college and dual enrollment. So I have no question, I'd be happy to reach out directly to, you know, the Simons Rock president and talk and have a conversation about this. But lots of colleges which would like to do that. I want to get into the idea of sort of, you know, what are the programs? So we're in the process right now, we haven't even talked about this, is the whole scope of ed visioning. And the idea is what do you want in your school, right? That wasn't my charge as a consultant. My charge is to figure out the model and kind of what made sense. But ultimately, the idea is you have to build a vision together as an eight-town group. And so we're organizing that visioning work really in a couple of different buckets. We know we want work done in the early grades, 3K through 4. A lot of discussion and debate around the middle grades because the two schools, the two districts do that slightly different. You know, you guys are six through 12, they're five through eight. So we've got that little fifth grade thing going on that has to get worked through. We know there's a 910 sort of academic side of the house that needs to get attended to and talked about, and that's all the electives and the courses. Then we know there's the CVTE career pathway stuff. So there are formal Chapter 74 programs, which are only two in South County, and neither of those two programs meet the standard of what's expected by the Department of Education. And both are Monument, one is automotive and one is horticulture. So we generated a list of, I think, 11 or 12 possibilities based on a lot of stuff, based on what we got from the students and from the parents in the surveys, based on workforce and economic data in the region. I'll give you an example. You talked about the carpentry program. The trades are in high demand right now. So what's happening right now is construct, greenagers, and railroad street are jumping into the space because the schools aren't dealing with it, right? And that, that's a reality. So the question, would you build a construction trades cluster in the school and start creating, you know, a conduit for kids to think about pathways into carpentry and plumbing and HVAC and electrical? Do I think it would be wise to put electric program in the school? Probably not, because I think it's so specialized that it would be maybe hard to draw from the size population you have.
Try and hire an electrician. You might sing a different tune.
No, I agree. And then, you know, the idea of culinary at Monterey, right? We, I think it's great that kids get to get into that kitchen, but it is not a culinary program. I can assure you of that. And Frank is a culinary, certified culinary teacher. He can tell you what a culinary program looks like. A Chapter 74 program is a four-year sequence of courses that works across five standard areas, equips kids with training, certification, safety, so they can go out in the field and use equipment. And I can tell you what's happening in non-CVTE programs is not what's happening in CVTE programs. So it doesn't mean you can't have those other things in certain areas where they make sense, right? I think we, we're talking right now, the steering committee, about where does it make sense to have a full-blown Chapter 74 program? And where does it make sense to bundle a few courses into an experience through high school that may be set you on a trajectory post-high school? But I can tell you, we did the graduation work on new districts, and, you know, a lot of high schools, like the ones I was involved in, ramped up a model of college for all. It's great, college for all. It was, I'd say it was greatly driven by the idea of equity and wanting to ensure that all kids could aspire onto the highest possible outcomes. And we moved away from trades and things that we all did in school that I think were experiential to sort of, so anyways, as part of the, you know, college for all push, the idea is that they would graduate, go to college, and get degrees. The reality is that's not happening. Less than 50% of the kids who graduate from the two high schools actually get a college degree within six years. So they're actually not earning degrees. So they're going to college.
Is that divided up or is that
I have both. I have both high schools, data on both high schools. It's all lower in Southern Berkshire. Now, maybe they're finding gainful employment and going into business with their parents. I don't, I don't know that for sure, right? The, the state is tracking some income data. And we know if kids go through high school without a program, without a plan, they end up at either retail or in service, right? And they're probably not going to make a living wage. They might be resilient and smart enough to work their way up through the construction field, get their license, and end up in a really good position. But out of the gate, it's poverty wages. So the idea is to create pathways for kids that go through high school into additional training or right to work. And I think it's a compelling argument, to be honest with you, given the number of kids who are not getting college degrees. Jerry?
I think the kids that go to a vocational school and get a trade are more likely to stay in the community where they live. And if they graduate college, they're going to filter out to bigger cities where there's more opportunity. I think you need vocational schools, and I think it's an important thing to have.
Nadia? Nadia, I didn't say anything.
Yeah, it's good to see you both.
Good to see you.
I have one quick question, which is that estimate-ish right now, very loose estimate of 100 million, does that count for CVTE into the new building?
It does, yeah. And it sort of links to a question that Susan asked me earlier about the savings. We actually saved staffing dollars. And we didn't do much in terms of educational reinvestment because we really feel like the visioning work has to happen between the eight towns. We want you all, like, I don't think this works unless you all make it your own. You build it together. If one person, one group builds it, the other just joins, it's, it's going to, I don't think it's going to have the same vibe. So, so tell me your question again, I'll make sure I
That was, that was it. And then, but kind of a follow-up. And then is a thought that if you don't merge and Monument builds a new building, would they include CVTE?
Yeah.
And so then they're running a small program, right?
Yeah, so, right. The point I was going to make, I'm sorry, I didn't make it. I lose the train of my thought, I'm blocked, and I get a lot, I have a very busy mind. I can probably a lot of you in the room. But we, we did build one additional cost into the model that's actually reflected in the real numbers that you see there. That was 10 new CVTE teachers that's in the model, already paid for. So we were, it, on paper, didn't look as reduced a lot because we added back. But we know that in order to run six programs, which is what we think is kind of the target, you need two teachers in each program.
So what would be the six?
Well, that's where we have this list of 11.
We're going to get both districts together and kind of talk about that, and look at the survey and look at, you know, the interest and stuff, and look at what the data says about our county, you know?
Yeah.
You know, Southern Berkshire. I mean, we just, we looked just at the, really, I looked at the students going, you know, some of these things, like, oh, you know, one of the big things was cosmetology. And I'm thinking, I'm not sure. It's a good program, but, you know, how many kids are you going to get into cosmetology? And I think that was just a group of kids that wanted a program, you know? And, but looking over the whole scale of it, you know, it was like construction, it was information technology, it was, you know, there was some culinary.
Medical, health.
Medical, you know, that was another one. And again, when you're looking at some of these programs and you're looking like, say, you know, the health tech program, you know, kids learn to get CNA, and then they move on and stuff. But you can use that at night as the after dark program and like McCann does. And what you do is you do it for adults to come in and they get their LPNs or RNs. They get training at night. So you get to use the school again, you know? That's the after dark programs when you have the vocational. I was, like I said, I was in a vocational district, and that's what we did. I mean, and that's where you start to make some more money, you know, when they come in and do the after-school programs, the adults, you know, so.
I want to answer the second part of your question, which I didn't, which is what happens if they only build it along with three towns? And, you know, one of the questions you have to ask yourself, you know, in my position, is what's in it for everybody, right? You know, and so the question is what's in it for Berkshire Hills? And I, I think a lot of folks in the five towns thinks what's in it for them is you all paying for their high school, right? That, that is probably the perception. And I think if you look at the numbers, it's very limited impact on the high school. I think what's really in it for them is a larger student body to offer a robust, more robust programs. If they build a school for 700 students, they will be expand the footprint, and that benefits all kids, including the 500 kids that are there. And so they would potentially offer more vocational with 700 than they would with 500. So that, that will look, I mean, there's, and just be honest, there's two planning tracks running right now. One is a three-town and one is an eight-town. And so it will look different if it's three than if it's eight.
And then my main question was really actually about community engagement. You said the other night there was something at the senior center in Sheffield. Was the target audience senior citizens?
Mm-hmm.
So, well, so that's, so that's funny to me because
The target audience was whoever had time that
But you're right.
Was it senior? And so what I, what I've experienced, right, showing up to these meetings is, I see a few parents, and it's actually, there's, I think, we probably have a good number of parents in here. It's hopeful. Probably the most armed parents I've seen on any of the meetings I've been to. Right, when the, when the board itself, right, is a lot of people not, not, that aren't going to be here when, when the school's actually up and running. And so my question is
Thanks.
No, no.
But their grandkids will be here. That's the thing.
Well, yeah, but don't push me out the door.
Yeah, I know. I have no kids in the game.
I'm sorry, I don't, yeah, I'm not trying to be
No, I don't.
Just to, I didn't mean like that. But what I'm saying is
Please keep it respectful, Nadia.
Yeah, so that's not, I, that's not what I was not intending. I was not intending to say that. But, but what I am saying is that I, I was the one who was talking to students who are, you know, the people who will be paying and will be whatever. And, and most of them didn't know what's happened. They had taken the survey. They said, oh, we know the survey's happening. And then there was one meeting last year, and it went, it happened. And, but I was the one with the student, there were a couple of us pulling up the posters. And so I guess my request would just be for, or question would be, what's, what's your consideration of the younger people, like the current students?
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, we, I've been involved in building projects. I hope it's my reputation, I go around building high schools. I, you know, if I had my brothers, we'd have people districts in Burke County. So we have a stronger county. But that being said, you know, I've built the Deconic High School and I was on the building committee for O'Connell. In Taconic, we actually targeted elementary level parents and early middle grade parents, because we knew they were the ones that by the time the sink got built, were actually gonna be the students in the school. So I, I, we're really open-minded. I, we've struggled, we know we need to hit two groups pretty hard that we haven't yet, students and also faculty. We need to get into the schools and talk to the teachers about this too. I feel like there's still a lot of misinformation flying there. You know, we're doing all we can to get out and we need, you know, we hope that people will show up when we go out. But it's, it's a lot of this, right? It's fourteen or fifteen people. And there's, the reality is we're gonna have limited time on how many these we can do. I'd be lying if I didn't say otherwise. So if we have ideas on how we can get captive audiences of students and faculty and parents, we are all ears, we will go where there are the, you know, wherever we need to be and we're committed to that.
Thank you, Antonio.
Can I just mention, Nadia, we are actually looking into potentially, and more steps have to be taken with the board, but creating a forum for students through Railroad Street to get kids from both districts looking at it together and coming up with almost like a joint statement feedback. So that's one thing that's kind of in the works, hopefully for us.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I appreciate you caring about that.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just have a phone.
I just wanted to say, I'm a parent and we have a kid in each district. We have a daughter who's about to start middle school in Sheffield and a son about to start high school in Great Barrington. And I'm super excited about this idea of all the models. This is the one I would have picked, having my kids in smaller schools to begin with and then going on to a big high school. I just really think, especially in today's world, that kids have bigger opportunities in high school and just chances to have a more diverse peer group. So I think this is exciting for my kids.
Did you have a comment?
I did, I have two questions. One, the figure about choicing, is it twenty thousand dollars per kid per year? Is that?
It's, no, that's a vocational tuition. Choice is five thousand for a student to go to a different district, that's the choice.
There's three different ways typically the kids come into a district when it's not a district of residence. One is through the school choice program, which allows parents to select schools out of district. And if the student does that, they have to provide their own transportation. And the, the district that's sending is charged five thousand dollars. The second is through a tuition agreement. So if a town doesn't operate a school, so Farmington River, right, Otis doesn't operate a high school. And so they have to have a, they have to understate requirements, have an agreement with a high school. And so they have agreements with a couple, and that's through a tuition. And then the third is any child in Massachusetts who wants to go to a chapter seventy-four program anywhere, get, and gets accepted, the town has to provide for them. And that means if there's a program in boat building on the Cape and that kid wants to do that, the town is on the hook for it. Sounds crazy, you know, right? If you're not offering that in your town, and that's a program that's available, you have to pay to send that child to that school.
You have to pay to house them too?
I don't think it was.
How would that work?
No, transportation and tuition. And so it would be a bust out, if the kid wanted to go to the Cape, then you'd have to pay for it.
Yeah, but you couldn't physically get there.
Yeah, I, I was probably a bad director. For me, because, because the example would be, you do send students in special ed to day programs.
But not three hours away.
And then you send it to residential program.
Well, I was a superintendent out at the Cape and there were students traveling on a bus to go to a program, two hours, each way. And not a problem, they had no problem, because they wanted that program. And the town had to pay the transportation and the, and the school that they were going to was twenty-two thousand dollars a year for the vocational tuition. Because I didn't offer it in my district what they wanted, so they had to go somewhere else. So that's what it is, you know, it's kind of.
I have another part to my question, I think that's what you were trying to ask earlier, but in a roundabout way. Are any of the other models still at all a possibility? Or is this the only option? In other words, is pooling resources, you know, one district and keeping all the existing buildings, any of that even a possibility? Or is it the only way this is gonna move forward is with the new school?
Well, very controversial statement I'm about to make, but I'll just make it. We've been in a couple forums where people have said, why are we not moving the middle school up to DuBois? And creating a seventh through twelve continuum into the school? Now, would that be reconsidered? That was one of our models. I, I don't know, we've made a recommendation, would further study, flesh that out and say, that would make a lot of sense, because then we actually could fully repurpose Mount Everest, because it would be empty at that point. You move sixth grade into, into Undermount, there's plenty of space for it, yeah, so. Second thing we hear, and again, we probably hold the vision on this, depending who you talk to, is, why are we not consolidating the outline elementary school? Again, we think that keeping kids, younger kids in smaller schools, closest to their home, shorter bus rides is the right thing to do.
I agree.
And so that's the way, that's why we recommended that. But I'm telling what we've heard, and I have no idea whether that will influence the board down the road, but those are other things.
I was just curious if like the sharing resources model for transportation and for, I don't know, salt and plowing, whatever.
Yeah.
If that is a possibility.
So you're saying.
It's a kind of all or nothing.
Kind of like a collaborative type thing. They used to have that and that fell apart. I taught at the collaborative and they had all that. They bought food together, the districts, they did other things together, and then they, everybody kind of just looked, it's not like a formal thing and everybody just kind of faded away and said, well, I can save money if I do it myself, I don't have to. So the collaborative doesn't work with a small group. There's a Pioneer Valley Collaborative, it's got five thousand kids in it. So they can, they got a bunch of schools and they can save money and do that. But like Jake has looked up collaboratives, how many have faded away? I mean, how many are there left?
They're consolidating too. But I do want to answer the question, like, so if the whole deal broke down and this doesn't happen, is there any room for collaboration between the two districts? And I would certainly hope so, but the history doesn't prove that out, just so we're clear on that. The history is good intent, lots of meetings, not a lot of results. And when there were results, they didn't stick for very long. They don't have a lot of staying power. So that's really why I think we ultimately need to wait from that and towards this.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is the school districts don't need our planning board to collaborate.
Sure.
Right, and, and I think Laura said this at one of our planning board meetings. There's no reason why the school committees cannot be talking about collaboration today. Right, they don't need us, they don't need a vote of the town residents to collaborate. All they need to do is do it. And, and whether this merger happens or not, wouldn't that be great if the collaboration started next week? Right, the school committees are free to do that, I hope they do. Because it will be a wonderful thing, whatever happens with this merger. And if the merger does happen, what a wonderful way to begin to build trust and community across the two districts, by increasing that collaboration now.
Okay.
I gotta, you keep saying emptying the school or repurposing it and stuff like that. Or if we move the middle school and stuff like that. Those schools are connected, there's an elementary school right on the other side through a door. So it's not like you can just empty out half of it.
No, yeah, I.
So that building has to stay in existence no matter what, you can't unheat one side, you can't shut down one side.
Yeah.
It's not feasible, it's not possible. You would have to do a total merge with the elementary.
Yeah.
You just can't, or you put, what, sixty students in the high school? That is our, what, six through eight?
Sixth grade.
You know, so financially, that's, you know, not a good thought.
Yeah, I think, I actually read that in the report, that the unique campus, and I actually taught at Mount Everest for years, I know it well. I, it is unique, because it was constructed as sort of continuum with the central office and library shared in the long corridor that connects the elementary. So the repurposing has to take that into consideration, which is why earlier I really said that probably the most likely solution can be an educational one, probably not an economic one, because of the idea that you would still have elementary schools operating them. But you could expand, you know, pre-care, early childhood care in that space, and there's other things you could do. I think that it would make sense. Not a perfect use, and it's a great building, I will not argue.
It's just that everybody seems to forget that it's not divided.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's okay.
And then also on the outreach for the community and stuff, I sat in one with my son, because they were doing the student thing.
Yeah.
And I was very disappointed with one of your community board members, who kept putting her own ideas up on the pin notes instead of addressing the kids' concerns. And their major outcome was what was going to happen to the mascot? And that is what she was like, it's like, that's not my children's concerns, you know? But she was like putting her, and my son knows, she goes, why is she putting her own thoughts up? You know, so it didn't address the children whatsoever. Even, I mean, the subgroups did, but once you merged back into that larger group, it did not. So you're getting feedback on something that's staff-oriented versus children-oriented.
I'll answer the first part, and I'm gonna kick it to Lucy, but. The first part is that was not our event. That was an event that was organized by the Joint National Honor Societies as a way to get the kids together, right?
Could I actually speak on that though? Because I was the one who initiated that.
Okay, great.
Well, I, I, we intended it to be, uh, to actually have, not have the board involved. And somehow it was, it was Monument side that got the board involved, and so not that, that.
Sure.
Just to say, I don't, the responsibility for that organization, like the organization.
Yeah, no, no, we know it wasn't you, and we know it was on Monument posting the little notes.
No, 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 not to say it was Monument's fault, we're just to say.
No, no, I, the representative was for Malia, because she was one of my daughters.
So, so I think hopefully we answered many questions tonight. And thank you Lucy and Jake for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
I, I think if there's any follow-up questions for members of the board or members of the community, what's the best way to reach you all? Would it be through our members of the planning board?
Yeah, there's a couple of really easy ways. Certainly you can go through your representative. The second way is, I think on almost every page, we have a Dropbox. I, I think I actually, something's popped in my phone where someone put something in there. So it comes to a central email and you can post your name to be on the mailing list, or you can post any comment or questions you have. We're working really hard to respond to all of them. And again, incorporate those, you know, Lucy said that there's about seventy-five frequently asked questions, and I think I'm sitting on another twenty-five that I need to answer. So, you know, I, we have the answers to them and some are sort of overlapped to other things. We want to make sure that we do respond to. The easiest way is probably through the website.
EightTowns.org, the number eight.
Eight Towns, the number eight, Towns.org.
There's also on the website an email address. If you prefer to send an email directly to us, you can use that email address to send a longer comment. But the website is probably the easiest way to do it. We're also talking to your representatives.
Yeah, sure. And in Monterey, that'd be Laura Rodriguez, Don Hoover and John Silver for Monterey, those are members of the regional school district planning board. So thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You were very generous to give us all this time, thank you.
You were generous to give us? You guys have done a. I want to know why it costs more to educate a kid in CBT than for college.
Okay, we'll have to, we'll have to follow up.
There's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of.
We, unfortunately, we have a recipe agenda.
There's a lot to it.
I figured.
So, I know you're.
Oh, thanks for coming, everybody, for saving your time.
It would actually be a big old wings, you know? So we're like kidding around with that, but that's not our chart, so we know that that one, the town towns get together if they want to do it, they come up with something.
Sorry, Lucy.
Thanks for coming, Nadia.
Thank you for speaking up, Nadia.
Yeah, I, I didn't go exactly with plan.
No, no, when you, when you have the kids going and what it was supposed to be to what it turned out to be, that really made me angry.
Yeah, that was unfortunate.
That was a disappointment, because the kids wanted to be heard.
Yeah, and that was a strange.
So I have three children that have no interest in.
Okay, yeah, so we had a lot of questions in the meeting, obviously, of the town regional school district planning board. But we need, we need to get back to business. We need to get back to the regularly scheduled agenda. So, and I, I think probably at some point, we will see what's necessary and what can, what we can deal with next week. But why don't we just start, old business number one, continue fiscal year twenty-three, appointments to the historical commission and ADA coordinator. So I have not found an interested party for an ADA coordinator yet, but we're still working on that. I do have a proposed list of the historical commission appointments. It is my understanding, Melissa reached out to the attorney general's office, if I'm not mistaken. And they said that if we accept statutes, that does not, that is not something that needs to be reviewed by the attorney general. So for instance, when we accepted the historical commission statute with five members, we wouldn't have sent that to the attorney general?
Right.
Okay.
They wouldn't have required us to send that.
Yeah. So I think I would be comfortable at this point going forward with these appointments.
That seems reasonable to me.
Of five, but as Donna said, I think we talked about this last week. If we accept a historical commission statute and the statute leaves three to seven members and our town specifies five, we're limited to five. So I would move that we make these following historical commission appointments all to the commission. Three years Barbara Swan, three years Susan Leone, two years Kate Laskar Budak, two years Maureen McFarland, one year Stephanie Sloan, three years alternate Donald Barkin, three years alternate Robert Grouse.
Second.
Any further discussion or public comments? Call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and those appointments are made. Town council contact form and policy. I see that there's a fair number of edits, so why don't I, I know we'll take another recap. I will take these edits and consider them.
Sounds like a good plan, just make sure to have a, look at this early on in the process.
What's that, let's see.
I'm just suggesting you move it to the front.
Yeah, yes, yeah, about authorizing.
Yeah, and I was trying, it's really hard to tell with the track changes if you've actually reduced it, because you add to it when you're, I was trying to, to not only move it around and make it flow, but also to reduce it to try to get it on one double-sided page. But I have no idea if I came even close to doing that, because it's hard to tell the trajectory, so.
Yeah. All right, so I will take a look at that and come back next week considering edits. Police chief's contract, so we tabled this last week. I believe edits have been made to reflect, to reflect concerns about it only being half a year rather than a full year?
It was just the, yeah, the, the number of weeks in the competition for, uh.
On call.
On call, thank you.
Okay.
For the rest of my sentence.
Are there any other comments, otherwise I would be happy to approve the contract?
I think I'm, yep, no, I think everything I brought up was addressed, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
Where are we signing on this?
I would, yeah, I would move that we accept the contract for Garesback as chief of police, which goes through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and I have a second, is there any further discussion or public comment? There being none of call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the contract moves, and we will sign two copies.
Ooh, we didn't fill in the day, do we need to do that now?
Given made this, should we do that, July?
July thirteenth. Yep, July thirteenth.
Thirteen day of July. Just on that front page.
Yep. Don't take them away.
Moving on to new business, we have internal transfers. I believe this will be the last internal transfers that we.
That is correct.
That we deal with for the fiscal year.
You have those, right?
I have, yeah.
Okay.
So it's one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents from lifeguard services to parks other. Um, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents from part-time officers to police office supplies. One thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents from planning board expenses to legal. One thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and seven cents from snow and ice to parks other. Ten dollars and thirty-seven cents from snow and ice to census worker wages. And twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents from snow and ice to public lighting.
Okay, um, any questions about any of those? Otherwise I'd move to accept those in, those internal transfers as a whole, as a group?
Second.
No further comment or discussion, Susan?
Uh, yes.
Justin, I'll vote yes and, uh, we'll approve all of those and sign them again. Um, the sexual harassment draft updated policy. Um, I had some edits. Just clarifying what an investiga-, uh, what an investigation would look like.
Is this, this is on page two?
Yeah, I would like to send this to, um, Sophia as, um.
She had the original copy, but I'll send her your.
Okay. Um, just to see if that's, I mean, basically, you know, the paragraph about it. Well, I'll just read the whole investigation section. When the town receives the complaint, we will properly investigate the allegation in a fair and expeditive manner. The investigation will be conducted in such a way as to maintain confidentiality to the extent practicable, practicable under the circumstances. The investigation will include individual private interviews by the town's human resources director with the following parties. The person who filed the complaint, the person who was the subject of the alleged sexual harassment. If that is a different person from the person who filed the complaint. Any witnesses to the alleged conduct and the person alleged to have committed sexual harassment. Based on his interviews and any other relevant and available information, the town's human resources director will make a determination as to if inappropriate conduct has occurred. And then it goes on to discuss, um, uh, potential disciplinary action and who would be informed of the outcome. Um, but I think, uh, given that it would obviously, you know, be something that the human resources director would then have, uh, have a, a large role and I think she should look at it.
Um, how different is this from the, the one we got from Donna?
Um, I don't know.
Just what you see is changes because everything else is exactly changing, Monterey and what.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to, I felt like broadly it was, uh, it was good as to a very general sense, but I wanted to spell it out more specifically. Who is responsible for, you know, investigating, uh, such a complaint? What, who would be interviewed? And then also taking into account, you know, other information. Because I, I think I could foresee a situation where something other than just interviews might come into. I mean, there's documents, there's, um, you know, other information. And I just wanted to make sure that I was reflected in here. But that's, uh, I'm trying to look.
Other relevant, um, the only other question I have is that, uh, you added a sentence under three. So it, it previously said, if any of our employees believes that he or she is a subject to sexual harassment, the employee has the right to file a complaint with the town.
Okay, so.
And then you added, if any individual believes that he or she is a subject to any of our town employees. Ah, so one is employee being harassed, the others in town is a member of, well, being harassed by an employee.
Yeah, I just wanted, I think this may or may not have been generally geared towards a, a workplace where everyone is employees and coworkers.
Right.
And given that it's not everyone, that we have, um, residents interacting with employees, I just want to make sure that was included in here. Not that, that wouldn't generally be understood to have the same process.
No, but I, I see your point. I just want to make sure I understood your intent and I, I think it does accomplish that.
As the town, we share the same responsibility. And then you, you'll also see, now that we're looking through it more, I did remove the, referring to the town administrator just because I didn't want multiple, uh, spread out.
Points of contact.
Points of contact. I wanted to be, be centralized to the human resources director. And any questions, that way you don't get the, I heard this from, from this person and that from this person. It would be tricky if you didn't have a human resources director, but I guess the goal would be to always have a human resources director and we'd obviously have to figure it out.
We'd have to revise the policy if we don't. But right now we do and that's a good thing. And I agree that having a single point of contact, particularly for harassment issues, is a very good idea. I mean, obviously, if it's the HR director that's guilty of harassment, we've got a problem. But, um, outside of that particular scenario, having only a single person is wise. Otherwise, there's at least, you know, we, we don't want more people involved than absolutely necessary.
So I guess rather than approving this or, I mean, I, if you have any other edits, we'll send this to Sophia?
I, I think it's a good idea to send it to me. I did not have any substantive edits.
Okay, Melissa, can you please, uh, send that to Sophia, the updated version? Thank you. A rigid contract renewal, so another, just the second of three contracts. Uh, you have the original, Melissa?
Do I have it at all?
No.
I don't think I have it.
It was emailed to you guys. You don't have a hard copy there.
I think, I, I didn't have any comments on it. Is it in any substantive way different from what we had before?
No, other than the price went up to eighty-two dollars per time.
From?
Seventy-something, I don't remember off the top of my head. I.
I don't think.
You don't really have much of a choice. This is the only place to get rid of, uh, a bunch of plastic, so.
Uh-huh, gotcha.
I know, I actually used to have it. It should have been the one I sent you with the documents for.
For tonight?
Yep. But you can always table it as it's been.
If that's the only contract we have and it's essentially the same except for the cost, um, mass mutant contract?
No, it's in the, in the email schedule, seven thirteen supporting document.
I looked at it when I got it. Um, do you have any problem with it?
No, I, I, I would accept it.
And so would I.
Okay, and, and this is for. Okay, uh, I would move that we accept the recycling services agreement, um, proposed.
Second.
Uh, any further comments, discussion, there being none, call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the contract is renewed and we'll sign that after the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, transfer station appointment, Tim Demming. Um, and then also the next, well, not the next, but five is, is transfer station staffing. So. We, it sounds like we, we are losing an employee or no?
We're not now. But we've made some changes in the schedule so that there may not be so much bickering between the two that we're having an issue. Um, I'm bringing Tim in, we'll cover Sundays. It's Jim. Bill doesn't want to work Sundays and we're trying to keep the other two as separate as possible.
So this, basically, this would give us, give Bill the day off he wants and give us coverage with two people on each day and no day with three people, which would be past our budget anyway.
Right.
So we, yeah, so we were also trying to accomplish not having three people up there anymore.
Um, I guess it's been, uh, I mean, it's tough to fill up Dave and Beth's shoes, for sure. They were.
Finding that out, huh?
Yeah, um.
So, so what, so what's the schedule going to be now?
Bruce and Bill on Wednesday, Jim and Bruce on Saturday, Jim and Tim on Sunday.
So who's this Travis, what's he, where's he come in?
Travis is, no, we're not keeping him on that.
Okay.
You want?
It's only Tim.
So it's Tim. So Travis is, it breaks the plans for me now.
Is this anything as well that we, I, I, I don't know if the human resources director is like swamped or what, what, uh, what is going on with her. But is this anything that we could utilize her to help, uh, figure out? I mean, I, I, it sounds like a plan, I just, I just don't know. And, and, no.
The schedule's gonna start immediately, so if you don't appoint Tim, we're gonna have a shortage up there.
So it's just that the one guy doesn't want to work Sunday and Tim will work the Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would also allow us to train Tim so that if the person who was intimating, they were going to quit, actually quit, we'd have a.
And the person that rescinded their resignation decides to give it back again, we will have someone.
That's already trained.
And so that is, because we've dealt with resignations before and once it, if that, a resignation is valid only once it, it is received by the town clerk, is that the case?
No, that's for appointed boards and committees.
Okay. So this is just, uh, okay.
He didn't formally submit anything. He was just intimating he wished to and basically.
He came and talked to Jim and I and said he was giving his two weeks and then he changed his mind.
Okay, gotcha, so there's nothing in writing. Okay, well, why don't we proceed with this in the appointment and then see how it goes? I know that, you know, we just want to make sure that things run, run smoothly there. So I would move that we appoint, uh, Tim Demming as a, as a transfer station attendant, is the proper word, and this would be an indefinite appointment.
Yep, second.
Any further comments or discussion? There being none, uh, Susan, your vote?
Yes.
And Justin will vote yes and the motion carries and Tim Demming is, is appointed transfer station attendant. And, uh, yeah, I think, let's see how this goes. Now we have Bruce, Bill, Jim and Tim. And then, so how is also this swap? Are they, the transfer station tenants are also overseeing the swap shop?
And what, what is happening with that? Is there like a designated point person or are they just all taking their turns, putting their.
Just like Beth and Day, they were all responsible for the whole transfer station.
Okay.
Okay. Treasure contact renewal. I had some comments, I didn't get them out till five-thirty.
Yeah, I would say we should table this so that Sarah at least has a chance to look at it.
Okay.
This was our contract.
Okay, so.
Can I see a few of your?
I don't have a copy, but since we're in a meeting, I can send you my edits.
Thank you.
Um. So I will send my edits to you and Melissa, you'll send them to Sarah Hunter?
Yes.
And we will see what she responds. My general edits were, let me look it up because I just did it. But I, I want to be, I want to be right.
You, you added, if you change your select board or where's like moved to select board and then you added that the town may suspend or terminate this contract for just cause effective immediately and without providing the consultant with written advance notice.
Yeah, so the provisions for termination or suspension were the town may suspend or terminate this contract at its sole discretion by providing the consultant with sixty days written advance notice? I actually have notice letter. And I didn't, I don't know what it would look like, you know, if we, if there were, you know, something egregious. I mean, we could probably argue that she didn't fulfill her end of the contract and that voided it. You know, and we could do it immediately, but I felt like to protect ourselves, uh, we would at least try and add this clause and see how she responds.
Can you read it again?
Um, so what I added was, what was existing was the town may suspend or terminate this contract at its sole discretion by providing the consultant with sixty days written advance notice. And the consultant may suspend or terminate this contract at its sole. And I added the town may suspend or terminate this contract for just cause effective immediately and without providing the consultant with written advance notice.
Right. So if, for instance, someone was guilty of embezzlement.
Yeah, I, I mean, look, I, I'd imagine that we could argue in that case.
Right.
That, um, she had not held her end of the contract, uh, and that voided it. Or I, I, I really don't actually know and I feel like this is a way to protect the town from, from never having to deal with that problem.
Having already had to deal with the problem, I, I think that we might have just caused them want to have something in the contract because that's like, but we have no reason to think that they will, guilty of same, but I see your point.
Couldn't you just find out, okay, that's what we could find.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we can do.
One clause for, for, for time.
All right, so we'll send that to Sarah as updated. Okay, and see, and see what she responds. Transfer station staff that we have dealt with. Select board secretary position, we've received two resumes. Um, do we want to do, or reach out at least for interviews?
Um, sure, and in fact, um, one of them, one of the positions they listed was, was Ann Glover. So, um, I actually reached out to Alex Glover. However, she's on vacation and she had a cell service, so she's willing to talk to me about the reference, but.
So she works for her currently or is a, she's a reference?
No, work. She, she gave them as, well, she didn't actually give them as, she listed them as a job that she had had. And she did in fact work there.
Okay.
But it was for a fairly brief period of time and I was curious, since I happen to know someone who works there, I wanted to find out more.
Gotcha. All right, so I, I will work with Melissa to set up those interviews, uh, in the coming weeks.
Okay. I'm assuming if we had any more, we'd know about it, so.
Yeah. Review time off request policy and make up time policy with human resources director. Um, fairly straightforward. Um, so we had talked.
But that would be, we have all the resources here, so.
Yeah.
They're not here.
So should we, Melissa, how is, I guess, could you give us an update on, uh, what Sophia's up to? Is she starting to work on employee handbook for all the towns or what? I guess, what's her?
She's gonna come in, meet with you guys next Wednesday.
Okay.
If you're around tomorrow, she's going to be here. If you want to stop in and meet her individually, we have a brochure pending retirement presentation at nine o'clock. We should probably be down by ten-thirty, you should be wanting to pop in and talk with her. But, um, from our conversations, she wanted to focus first on digitizing employee files, but I have since learned that we haven't done that. So I think when she comes in tomorrow, I'm gonna stress that you guys probably want the handbook done next.
Yeah.
She did tell me she has a few models that she's going to, to work with, to give some idea of something.
Okay, great. And, uh, we, so we can discuss, uh, anything else particular next week? We're meeting with her at six, is that so? Okay, great. Uh, discuss protocol for submission of signature papers, nomination papers and citizen petitions. Um, so. It is my general understanding, since I've been involved, which is not very long, but that generally there, the clerk or an election worker has been present in the hour two leading up to the deadlines for those items. Because I remember last, um, election cycle, I actually was running around getting signatures for the Republican caucus. And then I came at the same time as Barbara, who had gotten signatures for the Democratic caucus. Um, so, but, and I know Scott, uh, I was here when a select board, uh, not, nominee was submitting his papers this time and Scott, Scott was an election worker, was present to receive those items. Um, but I don't think that it was posted on the website or anything. So I would be happy to reach out to the clerk and ask her what has the protocol been? Because it seems to me like that is standard practice, but is it standard practice? And if it is, can we please post it so that?
That would be great.
People are aware.
Yeah, um, and I mean, I, and I think it's a good standard practice.
Yeah.
Right, so like it's, it's one that we should, and by the way, I did, because I noticed that the citizen petition could be on the website, I reached out to her and.
I reached out to her and asked about, well, could we put nomination papers up there too? It turns out we can legally. Um, she gave me the statute, I went and looked it up, she's absolutely right. By statute, she has to hand them out, because she can only hand them out to either, um, uh, someone who's qualified to run, a candidate, she has to check that they're qualified to run. Or someone who has the written permission of a qualified candidate to get it on their behalf.
Gotcha.
That is by statute, so in fact, it can't be on the website, so much for the digital age. I don't see, you know, from my perspective, that should be able to be checked ex post facto, right? Go ahead, spend your effort getting the signatures, but it won't be any good if you can't actually run, however, that's not the way the law reads, so.
Okay, and I, but I'll reach out to her and see.
That'd be great.
I, I believe it's standard practice, uh, double checking on that and, and if so, can we post it very clearly?
Post it, yeah. And I'd like to put one more thing on the table.
Yeah.
I brought this up once ages ago, I'm not sure at what point it was, but. I think it would be a cool practice to have swearing in of a select board member at the beginning of the first meeting after they're elected. I don't, I mean, the clerk has discretionary hours, it would take five minutes, but I think it would be kind of a cool thing. To just have the swearing in at the meeting, um. I, I, there's no reason we can't ask for that, I think it would be neat.
Yeah, I think that, that is, I do think that we should rethink our po- policy or tradition or practice of holding a meeting. Elections on Tuesdays, meeting the next evening, because I feel like the new member. Is brand new. But.
But I don't care when.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think whichever, whenever we have that meeting, even if we had an election Tuesday and didn't meet till the following week.
Yeah.
I still think it would be cool to have this one in then, I just like the idea. It's kind of a nice idea, yeah. Yeah, of a public swearing. A public thing, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, that's really what I was asking. The rest of us, it doesn't matter. You know, you get in here, whatever, but yeah, for this, no, this like, it's kind of like, yeah, like the may against the former.
Hey, they televise the president.
We might as well. Oh, do you want all that? We televise!
Okay, so I will, I will reach out. Number nine, discuss establishing select board office hours. So this is something that I've been thinking about for a while. But I felt like now might be a good time to introduce them, I know one thing that's come up throughout the years, a number of times, is, well, people. Are at the, well, it hasn't come up in a number of years, but people are at the general store on Saturday mornings. And, uh. They can stop by town hall. And, uh.
Well, maybe if you do it on Saturday mornings and then you serve coffee bagels while you, while you're having your office hours, you'll have to come in.
We could put a chair out on the, on the porch of people over here.
So, so, so anyways, all jokes aside. I know this is something, I don't know a lot of other towns that do it, but when I was thinking about it, I did look up and there are some other towns that, that do this. I tried to make it pretty clear in this. Just. Brief on what it would be, and, and if we ever did do these office hours, it would need to be clear to the, some members of the select board and the people coming in. These office hours are not public meetings with an agenda, but rather casual, open time for general discussions. Items or concerns raised at member office hours that may warrant official action by this select board will be added to the agenda of a future board meeting for deliberation action. The legal authority of a board member is limited to actions taken by the board at illegally called posted meetings with majority of the board present. But I just felt that, you know, people know where to reach us, but this could, this could be an additional way where they could come in and ask questions. And also sometimes people, uh, stop in and ask, where's the RX disposal or transfer station sticker? That wouldn't even be anything related to our official duties as select board members.
Or possibly a question I need to answer to?
Yeah, but we could, we could figure out, so this is just a proposal.
The board, previous boards have tried this.
Oh, have they? I was not.
It doesn't last long.
I was not familiar. So.
Nothing doesn't last long, because people don't tend to show up.
Comes in, or what happens is if people come in asking questions and we've got, you know, wrong answers being given, it just complicates the situation.
Yeah, well, you, okay, so you need good board members who either know what they know and refer when they need to refer.
Or say I don't know.
And also, yeah, availability is another question. I kind of tried to leave it up in the air, I know some other towns say twice a month. I thought as members are available, so. Not that any, you know, obviously our board members are more or less volunteers. So to the extent that they are able to hold office hours, great, and if not, they're not, but, um.
But if we're, if it's gonna be successful, people have to know in advance and we'd need, like, we can't both show up, for example.
Exactly, so.
So we'd need to be clear about when we were gonna do it, not just a Saturday, but I'm doing first Saturday and you're doing third Saturday, or whatever.
Yeah. And I just wrote office hours, dates, times, and location when we posted the town calendar on the website. I don't know how far in advance, and I also even dreamed up that there could be a specific, you know, the different e-alerts, one for select board member office hours, along with select board member agendas and minutes. Um, so it's just an idea, we don't have to accept it tonight, you can think about it if you'd like.
I think I would like to think about it, just because I, I also wonder, like. It could be a useful thing, I don't know how, it's not like my phone is ringing off the hook with people, but people do call me.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure if they would, like, I think they'd be more likely to call me than they would be to come by, but I'm not unwilling to do it.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, at some point, the store might open. But, uh, I'm not holding my breath.
Such a worse joke than that.
Alright, and we are going to table until next week the special event permit request for the Bill House, I believe. Okay, so that, that is it for new business.
No, I did.
Yeah, uh, well, well, uh, so I believe Jerry Claren is here for the Parkers Commission and, uh, has a, has a question.
Yeah, we would like either financial aid or physical aid, meaning that the town's highway department or something would do something to maintain the ball field. We've been receiving a lot of letters, many of them really not nice. And accusations, false information about the town spending a hundred thousand dollars on a basketball court, but they won't spend any money on a baseball field. And now they've started a writing campaign, so they've got the mothers sending us emails all the time, so. We do have an estimate from a contractor that wants five thousand dollars to repair the ball field.
Okay, and so given, given that this is, uh, not posted on the agenda, I think it's fine if we, we're gonna ask some questions.
We would like it, yeah.
Ask some, ask some questions and have a little discussion about it, but we won't make any decisions.
I would like that, yeah, because we, I think.
And Jim should be present for the conversation.
Yes.
And Jim.
This has come up before and the highway department has said they can't do it.
I, I, so I know that, and that's what happened is, and I think if you put it on the agenda, which you probably will for next week, you gotta get some parents here and it's gonna be a little bit of a thing, but.
So, and my, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, sure.
So, the Parks, Park Commission has a discretionary general park account, right, of the rent, is it seventeen thousand?
Yeah, and we have a lot, we have a lot of projects on the fire that we're paying for. This is something that, actually what happened, Gary O'Brien just walked away from it.
So.
Gary O'Brien always maintained this.
Yeah.
And it was part of his contract, that it was in our contract to do this at a much lesser amount. And he just said, I don't have the men to do it, and I can't do it.
Is it in the contract?
Well, we're not paying him for maintaining the ball field, but he still mows it, so all he really does is mow it.
So it used to be in the contract and it was removed?
One time he, we used to call him, he maintained the ball field, yes.
And it was in the contract?
There is no contract.
There is, there is no. Set.
I reminded the parks that they need to keep putting that out to bid and, and they don't.
I thought that the most recent, what, they discussed putting it on the bid and Gary went up a little bit, or no?
They never put it up to bid?
No, Gary doesn't want to do it, he says he has enough people to do it.
Alright, well, I mean, and Park Commission, you guys are elected, so that's really up to, up to the Park Commission.
Well, whereas it's for the town's assistance, either financially or. For the town maintenance people to take care of the town.
Okay, well, you have a Park Commission meeting tomorrow night, right?
Thursday.
That's tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, Thursday.
So.
I understand your confusion now.
Do you want to, uh, i- if, if you're a general ask for it? Draft a letter to the board or, or to Jim, or maybe just have some discussion to come to a, a consensus as to what the Park, as to, you know, the Park Commission and then, and then come back with specific.
Yeah, well, we, we want to put it on the agenda for next week's meeting.
Okay, do you want to do a joint meeting of the Park Commission and the Select Board if, if time allows? I don't know if time will allow, but maybe in the next couple of weeks?
We could do that, yeah.
Okay.
You, you guys got one estimate, is that correct?
It's not, you can't get anybody to do anything.
Great, so what would be involved in putting it out to bid, Melissa?
First off, what, what is it you're looking to have, I mean, looking for them to come, like, how we was coming weekly and maintaining the field?
First thing, the field has to be, the base pads have to be all braided and it has to be put into a good condition before we can have any maintenance of anybody to do anything weekly or something. Has to get back into shape.
What we need to know is what's involved in doing that, because if we wanna put it out.
What kind of materials, well, I need to know, like, what kind of materials, what kind of.
Well, we have an estimate from this guy, I'm gonna talk to Tom and see if he could pick it up.
Okay.
So does the estimate, like, lay out what it involves?
I don't know, I, I don't know.
So if it does, keep sending it to me, because I think it's, it's hard to have this conversation not knowing.
Because I'm gonna talk to Tom tomorrow night.
So, there, there's a few complicating factors, one is that the Park Commission is elected and has jurisdiction over the parks. And so, yeah, so if you wanna ask something of, of the town, you know, unrelated to that, like, whether it could be worked in the highway department job description or something like that, that's fine, we can have that discussion. But why don't we do it at a future meeting, either joint with the Park Commission, or if you can get a consensus of the Park Commission. You know, whether it's through a letter or, or, or have a discussion about that, that would be good. So we know the concrete request and then we can proceed from there.
Alright.
Well, if it's five thousand, Justin, nobody has that in their budget.
Right.
Well, yeah, we can talk about adding it.
So this would be, this would be like a special town meeting that you would need to have.
We can talk about adding it to next year's budget or other things like that, but we just need to get a sense of, I mean, the Park's general account is not small. And I know that there's plans for that money, but maybe one consideration would be the Park's commission, if this is something that they wanna prioritize.
The way, the way it's probably going, it looks like the Park's commission is not going to spend any money on the ball field. And that might.
Okay.
You can have a lot of hot hand. It, it is bad, but there's also a lot of things that we've addressed that we're trying to maintain in, in this, in the community with that budget.
Alright, well, I guess by, that's decisions for the Park Commission.
Yeah.
And we can't. We can, uh. Tell the Park Commission how to do their job.
But I will say this, if you're going to come to us and ask for help, it needs to be really clear what it is you want, just saying fixing the ball field, is it specific?
Alright, we can do that, we'll do that.
Right, okay.
Okay, so. Review mail-in correspondence, Chris Blair, um, sent us a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest at twenty-three B three form. He simply, you know, it was advised to submit this to the Appointing Authority, which is the Select Board, I don't think that. There's anything that we have to do, but thank you, Chris, for, for following that procedure. Updates from Town Council regarding special municipal employees, volunteer labor, parking at town beach. So I just got something about parking at the town beach at five fifty-seven P M. And.
Wait, do you want me back here?
For, no, I'll send it to, um, to Tracy, who would ask the question. And, um, it, you know, I think, it's another thing where it's the Park's commission. The Park Commission is really dealing with it, but I can share that legal opinion so that people have access to it. I'm not gonna summarize it because I just received it.
Can you send it to me too?
Yeah. And then volunteer labor, still waiting to hear back from.
Okay.
Special municipal employees, Donna had a. Task for us and Melissa to work on, which was to come up with a list of everyone that we designated?
Which I did that, and now she wants you to come up with a list of those positions that you feel. Meet the criteria for special municipal employee and maybe just designate all the positions.
Okay, all at once.
Right.
So, we are automatically special municipal employees as, as select board members in a small town.
Right.
And who else is designated, like, do you have that off the top of your head, or we can just see the list?
Was it tree warden, the conservation commission? I think that was it.
Okay.
Right. It may have been another, but I'm pretty sure that was it.
Okay, but that's something, I guess, that we should take up in the future.
Okay.
So.
So what does she need, we just need to list who they are?
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, but anyways, it was just something the board should deal with, and the bylaw, I don't know if we talked, was the bylaw update since last week? That you sent to.
Oh, I see. To the A D?
To us and to David Myers?
That was just the end of the day.
Yeah, it was just the other day, so, yeah.
So, I mean, we have some projects, we have some housekeeping, which is good.
Which is awesome. Um, I also wanted to, uh, add one thing, we, I, we, Donna told us previously that we do have to have a fence viewer, in fact, I think it's two.
Two.
Why, the, the follow-up question to that was whether the building inspector could be one of them, did we ever get an answer on that?
No, I didn't, I didn't ask her, um. I could, my general.
Because that's, it's an important legal question, because I, we can't make him one of the fence viewers if he's not allowed to be.
My general sense from the, from the building inspector is that. We're meeting with him next week, I think, is it, or in a couple of weeks?
Five seven.
In a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Why don't we speak to him then, because my sense is that. He wants to maintain his role as the building inspector.
But.
And not necessarily get involved in other.
Okay.
Other roles, but we can have that discussion with him for sure.
Do we have a clear idea of what the duties of a fence viewer are?
We looked it up a couple of times.
Yeah, I, I, I would say we're not really adding a role, but more of a responsibility to him, like, you know, he could just, it doesn't have to be building inspector slash fence viewer, it can be building inspector responsibility fence viewer.
Well, and, and frankly, I didn't, I didn't, I have not asked him, uh, whether he wants to be the fence viewer, and I'm not gonna say that I did. But, in, to the best of my recollection, but I think since we are meeting with him in a, a couple of weeks, we can. We can, um. Ask, it might be about trespassing by livestock.
That, well, this one says. Fence viewers advise lot owners prior to constructing a fence, which really falls under building inspector.
Yeah.
Because anything over four feet requires a building permit.
Okay.
So it would be appropriate to have him as a one of them anyway.
And we need to share.
And then you make his alternate the second one.
Oh.
Those are people who are actually getting paid, I mean, if you weren't getting paid, are you gonna go out and look at people's fences? That'd be like asking the animal inspector to go out and count chickens and not pay him something, you know?
Who is the animal inspector now?
Currently, we don't have one because he resigned, it was Julio.
Do we have animals to, it's like, to be the animal inspector?
No. No, because I could have, I have animals in Monterey and I don't want, I can't inspect myself.
They, they used to have an animal inspector.
Julio, until recently.
Yeah, Julio was in, before that, I think for years, it was, um. Porcher.
Yeah, yes. And, and, and he, Al.
Bobanelli.
Bobanelli, I guess you said, yeah.
It's always usually a member of the, of the board health. But Julio.
Which would make good sense, right? Is there, who's currently on the board health?
Tom Menzie, John May Cook, and Mor Sol.
And are, it, would it be worth asking, what are them going to do it?
Well, at their next meeting.
Okay.
It, I think it's something with a point inside them, just like the, um. Say the position.
Okay, so, so we're gonna ask them to either be aware of.
Is there, they're aware that Julio is?
Okay.
And they appoint, do they appoint their own agent, probably, the health agent, Jan Williams?
Uh, no, I think you do, they make the recommendation, but they appoint the, um.
Alright, well, we will fi- we'll figure it all, all in good time, we're meeting with Don Torrico soon. And we can dis, we can read up on fence viewers and discuss that right now.
Okay, I had, I, I'm not sure, this, uh, we might have to put it on a future, um.
Agenda.
Agenda, but, um, someone contacted me asking if it would be possible for chairs to post their own minutes, like they post their own agendas. What would be necessary in order to make that happen?
So the chairs that have been given. Access to it can post their own minutes.
Okay. And what was required for chairs to be given access?
Um, they need to get it set up with me.
Okay. So that they know how to use the system?
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about that in a public, I'll, I'll be happy to talk about it outside of a public.
I'll be leaving you with it. Just, I just wanted to know what the system was, that's fine. Okay. I go.
No, no, it has nothing to do with you, I don't wanna be recorded. No, no, it has nothing to do with you, I don't wanna be recorded.
Okay.
The reason I put one in the envelope is so I don't think so much with somebody else's.
Oh, you're a whole different story, maybe you don't even use a computer.
Okay, so we, if we want to take that up, we'll take that up at a future meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Um, we want to tackle minutes of July six, twenty twenty-two.
Who was it, so I can see if they already have access or not?
Park's one.
Not all.
Night making.
She doesn't, just so she's aware, if you do have the answer back, they don't currently post their own agenda.
Okay, so they're not doing either, okay.
And so.
Again, I would love to talk about that, but it's.
Yeah.
That's fine.
The minutes, the the agenda, there's the form, and then the minutes, the protocol is emailed to the from admin at Monterey M A and clerk at Monterey M A, okay.
And but I think one.
That's the current policy.
Right, well, I think one problem, they're having this problem at Sun's Rock, it's a pretty common thing. It seems like a great idea to have two people, but what happens is that everybody thinks it's somebody else's job. So, and you know, this.
Could do them or just send them?
What, to, no, if they are sent to two people who actually has responsibility to do it.
Well, so I guess I can answer that quickly, they could just send them to me because it's my responsibility.
Okay.
I I include the clerk as a nicety.
Okay.
I, or I ask them to include the clerk.
Okay.
When I post them on the website, she ends up getting sent a a special copy anyway, so.
Okay.
If that makes it easier.
Well, I, that works.
All right, uh select board minutes of the meeting of July six, twenty twenty-two, do we want to do this?
I just assumed responded to next week, um I'm kind of done, but if it's important to you, I will look at them now.
Okay. It is, there are not a lot, if I just look at blue and you just look at red.
Oh, you're right.
Then we could do that. I do see one thing on A on the second page here.
Second page, A, yep.
I think maybe I, maybe I miscommunicated and I can send you that email if you don't have it. Um, I need a list of things that I do, I'll figure it out, but. Um, it was more or less along the lines of 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 how Melissa had drafted and how I edited, but Attorney Brewer has stated that only the board are in the best position to determine whether there is any possibility of encouraging future lawsuits by disclosing, disclosing settlement or not, so she didn't, and I can share this with you.
She didn't advise it against it, sorry.
She didn't, she didn't say, she just said, that's a decision for the board.
Right.
I, as I asked her, whatever we had agreed to ask her, like should we, should we not, what are the legal consequences? And I got back and I can share it with you, I, um, the board asked us, I, I think, Melissa, you have that, did you get that? If you didn't, I I I will make sure that you get a, get a.
This is the the one about.
The settlement.
Where you took out one, oh, that one, yeah, I did, I can send it.
Okay, so that, anyways, just to reflect that accurate, accurate on the minutes, I think it should be,
That's fine.
Attorney Brewer has uh stated that only the board are in the best position.
Should be board is?
Yeah, only the board is. So we'll go with Justin's version.
Yep, but with the, with changing art is.
Speaking of that, I'm.
Encouraging future lawsuits by closing, like, that's fine, yep. By the way, did you get a response from ethics about the?
No, I have to do that still.
Oh, um I almost forgot, so August thirteenth at ten A M is a compassing workshop at the community center that I helped set up as part of the fence.
Okay, we can, we can, we can move it to a different day or time.
Has it been announced already, the second homeowners meeting?
No, I just put it on the calendar.
Okay, um, and so I I'd be torn about not being there, so I'm the one who set it up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and I should have realized that when you suggested it.
Well, they.
Nor I didn't, um, so do we want to change that?
Yes, we can figure that over email, I don't have my phone on me, which has my calendar.
Okay. No problem, I I get it.
Um, but we can figure that out, we can say tentatively, we're not doing so, second homeowners meeting. I mean, the minutes will stay the same, but we won't do the second homeowners meeting.
On the thirteenth.
When we said we would, but we'll figure out a new time.
We could just move it to eleven and I can, or eleven thirty or something and I can do it, because it's only an hour, we're chomping, okay. Yeah, it's R S D P B, it's not a commission, it's a board.
Uh, and so then when I edited it here, it was just.
Yeah.
Susan stated that the Monterey representatives to the R S D P B suggested she look at the r- materials that may be put out, but she would like more details, well, we got some more detailed information for sure.
Yeah.
Um.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I told Susan the next time she's gonna invite a bunch of people, she should let me know so I can get the town business done first. And then you guys can talk as much as you like.
It was good, good stuff.
Or have it on a separate.
It's just, it, when we don't put them first, it's tricky, because then there's no, just says we had time, they have to sit there for it.
Well, I had no, I had no clue what they were prepared for, what we were gonna do.
And I didn't know how many people, just because you reach out to people, doesn't mean they'll show.
I also, we asked a lot of questions, but I felt that there was some tendency to s- speak about, you know, I'd ask a question and hear an answer about something entirely different, I felt like, and then ask the question again, but anyway. We got it all figured out in the end.
I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna do it at town meetings, town meeting is probably gonna be six hours long if you have four times the people there having the same conversation again.
Well, I was very surprised to hear that, and, but not that surprised, because I wondered and I never made it through Mass General Law and figured it out. But if, so it sounds like the select board doesn't, it's forcibly put on the warrant by the, by the planning board. Uh, not forcibly, but.
We're required.
Remember when we had the bylaw review committee, bylaw looked at by the attorney general and he said, no one other than the select board can put something on the town meeting warrant?
Right.
That's not entirely true, I guess, because it sounds like this goes on the warrant without whether or not the select board wants to.
Well, but that basically they're getting around it by saying that they give to us and it's our responsibility, but.
No, no, I asked that question and she said, if what she said is true,
We should.
She said, so she said you're not.
the select board has no choice, and maybe the choice was that we we created the committee to begin with, but we don't have discretion to put on the warrant.
Also, my email is asking her what.
I'd like to actually double check that, because just because she said it doesn't mean it's true.
What, what?
Yeah, no, I'll ask her so that we can.
Let's, let's get, ask her what statute requires that, so we we know, we can look up the statute ourselves.
They have a council, it sounded like, if they were, so we can.
Yeah. Yep.
All right.
All right, is that.
Motion to approve the minutes of July six, twenty twenty-two as amended, would please.
Uh, second?
Uh, but yes.
Yes.
Uh, minutes are approved.
Two, three, four, right?
Yep. Um, comments and questions from the public? So the minutes are approved, comments and questions from the public, there are none, motion to adjourn?
Uh, just making sure I got everything on here. Oh, um, the one other thing was, so all those trees that came down on the storm, our folks did an amazing job.
Yes. Yes.
Um, should we, should we, I mean, I I wrote an email to um to the chief and to Sean and to Jim saying, awesome job, guys, but should we do anything besides that to be like, you guys rock, because you got a lot of trees out of the way, like, that was amazing.
I could get them some extra donuts for tomorrow's presentation.
Donuts, donuts, I think, thank you emails, thank you letters, if you want to put it on next week's agenda, thank you letter. That's fine, that was good.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I like thank you letters.
It was, it was amazing what they did, so, like, I, it's good to recognize people when they do amazing things, because we certainly recognize them when we don't like what they do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, yes.
Yes.
And Susan, yes, meeting adjourned.
Yay.